Oh wait, motion to open the meeting? Do I have to motion to open? Two, okay. Yeah, sorry. Okay, motion to open the meeting at 7:02 PM on Tuesday, May 21st, 2024.
So moved second.
Moved in second, and we are officially open. Let's see, motion to open is we will, actually, I mean.
Should we vote?
Is that?
To vote.
Should we vote?
Yes, all in favor of opening the meeting?
Aye.
Aye, thank you everyone. So the agenda for this evening, we will reopen the meeting. We will quickly hopefully review and approve minutes from the May 7th meeting. We have welcome two members to the planning board. We will discuss the planning board appointment to the Affordable Housing Trust for two-year term. And we will have the annual board reorganization discussion. And we will discuss the MBTA-VA multifamily overlay district workshop to be held June 25th here at Town Hall at 6:30 PM. And we have a hearing that starts at 7:15 PM. So when we are at 7:15 PM, we will open the public shade tree and scenic road hearing for several 36 trees identified by EverSource for discussion. Any other items that needed to be added to the agenda? We approved, motion to approve the agenda as put forth? Moved, seconded? Okay, all in favor of the agenda for this evening? So the minutes from May 7th, has everyone had a chance to review the seven minutes? And are there any items, meaning addressing changes, comments? I did not see any.
I have a change. It's to solar bylaw update front of scenes dot one to whether it's in part of the same paragraph where, or number two, where stuff Frank will ask, or it's a separate sentence after a law. I would like to have Frank looking the comment that the letter supports the creation of a BESS bylaw. What I'm suggesting is adding the words to this. Frank, look me the comment that the letter supports a BESS bylaw.
Supports community.
Sorry. So we got it.
New seconded. You have those edits. Are there any other additions? Is everyone okay with the addition that Frank is recommending?
I'm fine with it, although I'm not actually, what does that meant to apply? You would need a separate bylaw to regulate battery storage systems that do not have a solar component?
Battery energy storage system in general. Frank was just looking into towns and getting a feel of one other town if you want. If there's a standalone battery energy storage system.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, there. I guess the point I was making, there is some regulation of the battery storage component of a solar field. But are we thinking that the bylaw as written would have no applicability if there's no solar component and it was just a plain battery storage and we have to write a new bylaw because of that?
No, the, our proposed solar bylaw was, was approved with the exception of that statement that you can't prohibit a battery energy storage system.
Right, I know.
And so I just, so my point was is that we should have a bylaw as opposed to just a sentence or a change to the solar bylaw to complete the battery energy storage system.
Have a bylaw that would address the conditions under which a sole standalone battery storage.
As well as with a solar, large scale storage system. So that it could be referred to and not have anything, just that one section.
That clear? I mean, we're not.
I'm not sure I should point anymore, but I still don't, I'm trying to understand what the point is. We have, we have some regulation of the battery storage component of a solar installation in the bylaw right now as adopted. It has some requirements on, you know, the fire safety aspects of things and such. And so the question is, do we think that that is inadequate and we need more regulations associated with batteries? Or do we think that those regulations might be adequate, but they might not apply to a battery only system?
I think we don't know the answer, and that's why we wanted to research to see whether it would be covered, because we want to make sure we're covered. And right now, we don't know if we're covered.
Right now, I'm talking about it.
That could very much become the exact details of how it's.
So I think the.
Just adding one line to the minute. And the minute is not deciding what we're giving, it's just adding that.
But no, it's, it's a good point. I'm just trying to understand the purpose of it, but it does seem like a reasonable point.
The, the sentence Frank would like to add is the letter supports.
A, a BESS bylaw.
Letter supports a BESS bylaw.
Yeah, I didn't put the words.
Doesn't mean we have to do it. He's just saying the letter supports.
So that's all, this will come up for discussion again. You have that language. All right, any other questions concern? Right. If the hearing done, motion to approve the minutes from, what was it, May 7th? Second? All right, all in favor of approving the minute from May 7th? Thank you. All right, we are at 7:09, so we have time to welcome our new members. Congratulations, Stephanie and Jim. I guess because it's on, do Jim, if you'd like to, quick. You also currently serving in the district?
Yeah, I'm currently in the district, in the district commission, which I think I may have to resign from one of those. Due to the public, public interest regulations, I have to check and jacking on that. I sure remember that in training.
Okay. Oh, we'll find out, but anyways, nice to have your experience on that. And then your, your big job is your architecture.
Yeah, I'm a licensed architect. Right now, I work for a company in Boston called IA, focusing largely on interior for that, it's like manufacturing, but before that, I worked on corn shell lab and office buildings, public school, university projects before that.
And Stephanie, nice to have you on this side of the table. You've been doing minutes since 2018?
Yep.
So you are very familiar with what we've been discussing at planning board level and also groundwater protection committee and then your, your day job.
I'm, I'm an engineer. I work on water related issues specifically as they relate to point change. And so I'm an engineer and urban planner during my day job.
Okay, well, nice to have you both here. 7:11. All right, so next, the planning board has an appointment to the Affordable Housing Trust to two-year term beginning July 1, 2024. I have been the planning board appointment, appointed planning board chairman. But I am also happy to have someone else who has an interest, if there's anyone else who has an interest in being part of the housing trust. There hasn't been a ton of activity, but it's kind of a nice way, another group in town to be involved with. So if there's someone else that's, any other need, interest? Frank, do you have any interest?
I'm not.
Oh, nice.
If I, there's nobody else that wants to do it, then.
It's good to switch that up a little bit. Kind of activity, I don't know if there's someone else that has an interest?
I don't have an interest.
You have an interest? Well, then, is there to nominate a committee or planning board representative for the planning board?
Your father?
Someone?
Who's seconded? All in favor? Secondations. There's a form that the annual, you need to fill out because the select board has the official appointing, the recommendation of who the planning board representative that the select board does the appointment. Guess I'm at same, two minutes left. It's a good to every time you have an election or, or to evaluate if your organization has the chair, vice chair and clerk positions. Kind of a nice thing to do since we've just had an election, it would be the routine time to discuss if there's any change in leadership, right? Not even the official kind of board titles. I don't know if that quickly says.
I'm now a need for chair at any one.
Second.
Would you want to?
Yeah, I mean, now that I'm here, I'd be happy to give it another, you know, give it a year. I came in in the middle of the year, yeah, so not a meaningful year. So I'd be happy to take it on for a year and then next June, we should talk again and see if there's someone else. We do need a vice chair and, oh, if, but we need a vice chair and a chair, so if we could give a full slate, then. So is there any?
Was the vice chair before, was it Will?
But that.
Was the vice chair before, was it Will? Will was vice chair.
Vice chair. So Frank, how about, Frank or Rob, since you're next to most senior vice chair, like kind of a.
Sure, I mean, basically involves table, chair.
Yes.
Otherwise, that you just.
If you want to take vice chair, want to clerk?
I'll take vice chair.
There. Then are you okay with clerk? It's a name.
I'll take the notice until we get the.
Don't have to be going to court. Okay, so, I mean, motion to approve officially of myself as chair and Frank focus vice chair and Rob as clerk for this year. Okay, second? Okay, all those in favor of the, the seriously? Sorry, thanks everyone. Okay, so now we are at 7:15 exactly. Welcome, we are opening the official hearing for the trees on Farm Road under the planning board jurisdiction under the scenic road act because of the stone walls along Farm Road and the tree warden has jurisdiction over all the trees as well as the trees in particular because throughout town under the public shade tree act. So we have Brian McSweeney, our tree warden here. Okay, sorry, I was trying to get my attention. So officially opening, the hearing notice is hereby given pursuant to Mass General Laws Chapter 40, Section 15C and Mass General Laws Chapter 87, Section 3 concerning the cutting of public shade trees on Farm Road, a designated scenic road for power line clearance. A public tree hearing was held on Tuesday, May 21st, 2024 at 7:15 PM at Town Hall 19 Washington Street. And the trees were posted on, the list was posted on the town website available to the public as well as being tagged along Farm Road for identification. And we have, so as I said, we have our tree warding, Brian McSweeney here, and we have Russell.
Think you need to vote to open the hearing.
Motion to open.
Sorry, motion to open.
I was trying.
Motion to officially open the tree ward, the tree hearing. Move seconded, thank you everyone. All right, so all in favor of opening a hearing officially? Hearing is officially open. All right, so with the hearing officially open, like I said, we have from the town, we have our town tree warden, Brian McSweeney. We also have Sean Gleam here who's public works, so Brian and Sean work together in that aspect and Russell?
I'm Russell.
You're Russell, okay. Russell?
I'm Russell Holman. I'm the supervisor of vegetation management for Eastern Massachusetts River Resources.
I'm Kristen Zoll, as manager of vegetation management for the state of Massachusetts.
Hi.
Okay, so refresh my memory somewhat. We'll start with the first tree and discuss them one by one. There's your bench practice, or I know we got our list, we have our comments, that's the EverSource arborist, Russell Holman has played, and we have our comments from our tree warden.
Anyone needs to copy the list, it's over there.
My last time I recall doing this was 2017, so a little bit rusty.
Are you trying to?
Anyone else?
You want to, can you share the, the tree? You need to have the trees.
I think it's really helpful to have the photos.
Showing up on here, but not showing up.
Yeah, it shows up in here, it says.
What's going on? Anything going on?
Please, on another meeting too.
But if there's somebody, we can ask it personally.
Sally, are you able to see our screen?
Um, yes, but I'm not hearing anything, so I'm just curious as to whether it was mute or something's going on that I've missed, so.
I can hear you, you gotta turn the volume up.
Yeah, I just did.
Are we also muted?
Sally, can you say something? We're trying to test if we can hear you.
I'm testing, one, two, three.
Great, thank you. And then I wasn't sure what the answer was before. Are you able to see the screen share of the images of the tree?
Yes, yes, but nothing was being said, so I wasn't sure if I was missing something, so.
There's very technical challenges. Okay, so. All right, so the first tree on our list is located at the pole five dash slash two, close its address is eight Farm Road. The hickory, it's lifted as a hickory near the wire. It's 24, 30 inches caliber.
Before we start going down this list of trees, can I ask just like a general question maybe to the gentleman from EverSource, which is kind of, what's the criteria? Are you looking to cut anything that would cause a problem during the next 20 years? Or, you know, kind of what's the time horizon of when, how often EverSource would, to this kind of make?
Beats all the trees that we have on this list, aside from a few that we've identified some structural issues with. We're asking for these to be moved specifically because we are doing an upgrade on the street. So for us, we'll replace all the poles, we're going to be putting in new wires. Vanessa may be able to give a little better explanation of exactly what the project encompasses.
Sure, so currently you have step downs, two step downs on a pole. At Southwood, you go on to Farm Road, and you have two phases extending the street across the 300 feet. What we're going to do is we're going to retire those step downs, the air assembly equipment is from 1960. It's time to be retired, upgraded, and we're going to bring in three-phase construction at a higher standardized voltage, so it's going to be 13,800 volts instead of the existing 4,000 that you have right now, phase to phase. We're going to extend those three phases down the street to create a tie between the circuit and Dover to improve the reliability, shouldn't happen in the future, if you utilize that to pick up the load from a different direction.
Does that mean that the, the wires will be at a different height or level than what they are right now as well?
Yes.
What is the change?
Yeah, the pole we're replacing is about five feet higher.
The other thing that we have to take into consideration, Vanessa mentioned a step down, so currently the voltage on that street is about 4.16 kilovolts. So with the upgrade, we're going to be tripling, at least tripling that voltage. And so a lot of wires on Farm Road right now are in very close proximity to the trees, but because that voltage is considerably lower, you know, we probably haven't had any issues in the past, or very few issues in the past, which is with this upgrade that we're going to be doing, we can be much more mindful of how close those trees are going to be to that wire.
Why would the poles replace five feet higher than the current? So just new standards or is that just to keep it away from vehicle traffic? What's the thinking in having higher wires? I'm just curious.
The farther you keep the, the, the wire, the electricity weight in the ground is safer to put this. The, the new poles that we'll put in were owned by Horizon, but it's pretty standard practice, I would say. We're replacing poles that were probably 40 footers or 45 footers, let's say.
Present, sorry, yeah, 45 footers.
So the new poles and the wires will be located in the exact same locations and positions of the current or with their behavior optimized, rather than those poles and things.
Excuse me, I'm having a little trouble hearing. I still don't understand why are these wires going up higher?
This is the microphone's up there, so.
Frank, I can't really hear you. Can you speak up or something? I don't know.
We're just talking with that and trying to figure out this technical issue, so I really wasn't saying anything of significance for, for you to hear, but I'm trying to.
Okay, okay.
The, the microphone is behind our audience, that's the result that's using this. The other option I have is like getting a microphone to.
Yes, it should be fine because they hear you.
I'm forgetting the microphones.
I know, but we're closer to it. They may very well hear if she speaks up.
I can just recap what the changes are to answer the question, if that's helpful.
That would be very helpful, yes.
So if I'm understanding correctly, there's a need to retire old equipment that was installed in some cases in the 1960s. Upgrade from two-phase to three-phase power. Upgrade from four kilovolts to something like 12 kilovolts.
13, yeah.
13. And also with this upgraded equipment, be able to have the capability to tie into, into a Dover network for better reliability. So it's really just a power infrastructure upgrade on the, on the street. As part of this, they replaced all the poles already. We can see the old and new poles in the photos that will be shared. And the, the poles are about five feet higher. And so all of the trees that are proposed for removal by EverSource are proposed for removal to accommodate the new equipment.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
Open everybody here talks. If we use this, it should make it louder.
Just quit working. Did you shut, it worked when you were here? Try that, I don't think it worked.
Nope.
If he flipped the switch on.
It's not charged.
Senator, we have two residents that sent in emails. Two residents who were not able to be here this evening because of the tree warden meeting happening simultaneously. President Mary Moore has on Farm, resident of Farm Road, 43 Farm Road.
And I would like to get to that meeting too, so if we could get to tree two and three, that would be helpful to me.
Okay. Mary Moore notes, I've reviewed the documents posted, agree with the tree warden comments for the 37 trees identified, don't believe the town should approve removal of any shade trees along Farm Road without support of tree warding. And she thinks the town may have received her notification and not been. This is eight Farm Road, Arthur Fennell has noted objection to removal of public tree number eight and number seven. Formal objection to the removal of whole or in part of number eight, a white oak at 58 Farm Road between 23 and 524. Number seven, white oak at 54 Farm Road between utility poles, 522, 523.
I'm sorry, could we just do two and three so I can get to the other meeting? I'm sorry to be pushy here, but yeah.
I need to read this, I think I have to read this letter into public record. So, and I have to finish, it should be before I discuss the treaties. As expressly determined by the Sherburne tree warden, it's evident in the photos taken today, tree number eight is strong and healthy, tree seven also perfectly healthy. These trees provide shade and add to the aesthetics of Farm Road as a state designated scenic road and absorb stormwater runoff, which is, which presents, otherwise presents hazardous roadway conditions in this area. EverSource lifted these trees for removal because they're in proximity to power lines. While I am sensitive to that concern, especially as I work in public safety, there's no reason to remove the trees on that basis where the line guards currently in place indisputably have adequately protected the power lines and continually, continue to adequately protect those lines. Indeed, EverSource made the identical complaint a year ago, and there's no evidence the line guards have failed to protect the power lines in the intervening years. The planning board's merrily rejected the last attempt by EverSource, and I will respectfully request that the board reject the attempt today. All right, so there are two letters received. And I guess, hearing the voltage difference, I don't have enough knowledge, which is why I'm glad Sean is here and anyone else who has that kind of knowledge on what we're dealing with, with this upgrade. There's definitely, you know, these trees are aesthetically and functionally providing a lot, so we, I guess we need to start with tree number one. And if you're on Zoom remote, we are attempting to notice who's raising a hand, so please use the raise hand feature to speak. Now we're having difficulty with the hearing and the microphone, but we'll try to speak up.
I have a, before we get started, a question for the tree warden. I was curious, when you made the, the comments on these trees, it looks like it's mostly about the current status and health of the tree. Did, did you account for the need to? Did, did you account for the need to have wires in a different location and potentially higher voltage wires as part of your evaluation?
I look at the health of the trees that they would like to remove as far as voltage.
Brian, would you use the microphone? I'm sorry.
It's not working.
To answer your question, I, I looked at the health of the trees. I didn't, I didn't know the voltage increases or anything like that. Well, I made my judgments on the health of the trees and whether or not they should be removed because the wires come through.
Okay, so it's more like you looked at the tree's existing health and its interference with the existing wires. Is that, is that inappropriate?
Not the interference of the existing wires. Those wires have been there since, how long? And the trees are, they're growing around them.
Right, but I, I think I'm hearing that they're going to have the wires in a different location.
Five feet difference.
Okay, so, so your comments are still valid then?
Yes.
With five, okay, thank you for clarifying.
All right, so I guess we'll see how this goes, but we'll start with number one and hopefully get to the end. The first tree, the hickory, I believe we got it up on the screen, oh, yeah.
Eric Sackus, that's our property.
This is your property, okay. You were eight Farm Road?
No, there are thirty-one South Main.
Thirty-one South Main.
Is that true, right?
It's across the street.
Yeah.
Behind the church, right?
Okay. The tree is on our side of the street and the next, past the farmhouse is eight Farm Road. Past the firehouse is eight Farm Road.
Okay.
So we are where the tree is, which is thirty-one South Main.
Okay, no, sorry. This is a hickory, I don't know if the next tree, there's more than one, the third is the one. This is a little bit closer up view of this hickory. And identified by the tree warden as leaning away from the wires and healthy. I, I'm looking at it. Yeah, it, I can see the new pole looks like it's placed closer to the tree than the old pole. And I guess, I don't think we were.
No, this picture does not do it justice.
Yeah.
That picture does not do it justice.
Yeah.
That, that tree leans away from the wires.
From our view on our property.
Leans that way.
Goes up and away, you have a pole like right here, so it kind of curves.
It's going to be grooved?
Well, the wires are going to be higher.
So we are, we are going to require pruning, if we are not able to remove that tree to get our normal specification of ten feet above, ten feet to the side, and ten feet below. And concern with the wires that are there. The concern being when we do that pruning, that the level pruning we do on that tree may cause that tree in the future that wouldn't need removed. It's, it's beyond the normal specifications in our N C A three hundred standard that we would do on a tree of that size. The size of cuts that we make on that tree. And my belief is that in the future that tree will need to be removed because of the pruning. We need to deal with in order to accommodate the construction of the wires.
So I am concerned because I don't believe that, this is the first time that I believe any of us are hearing of the increased voltage and as being a different standard than what we're, we've been looking at. And I don't know other, like, if I'd known that the increased voltage, I would have maybe explored other towns where the voltage wires have been increased to kind of educate myself a little bit more on, you know, ten feet is, that's a lot of distance, especially when we've got a stone wall that might not even be ten feet off the wall and we're, it might not be ten feet off the edge of the pavement and you've got a tree.
I'm sorry, you were talking about basically ten feet clearance above the low and side of the wires, not the entire pole.
Correct, the wires, the new wires that are being constructed. We would need to have that clearance of ten feet for the wires.
And what's the, what's the regulation or policy that that is? And I'm just trying to.
That's our normal pruning specifications that we follow for, for all of our circuits.
Regardless of voltage?
Yes.
And, and just to be clear, the, our pruning standard is the same regardless of, of the voltage. In comparison to four holes in the thirteen eight that this may be upgraded to. We're supposed to be maintaining a clearance of ten feet to the side of the most primary wires, fifteen feet above actually. In this particular case, the pole that is near this tree is also going to be carrying a very important piece of equipment. It's going to be carrying a switch, if you would like a better explanation of exactly what that is. Vanessa probably fill you in.
Sure, so when we bring three things down the street and we're connecting, have the opportunity to connect up to another circuit in Dover, you need a switch on one end and a switch on the other. So if something happens on a circuit, you can, you know, close this switch, pick up this switch and now you're fed from Dover. So without the switches, you need, you need the switches to supply, like the key.
And you can get another pole being placed that's not right near the tree that could hold those switches? If those are problematic or more sensitive than just the wires?
You really can't because that's how you tap off the main line, you typically need to be right there by something.
Because if you put a pole, if you put that pole in one direction or another, then it can be, maybe would not be that much of an issue with the tree. Especially with the, with the switch, they can't have the switch on, on that as well. We're just trying to, trying to come to some kind of consensus, keep as many trees as possible.
As a town, we were informed that poles were going, we were replacing old poles. So we've kind of looked at as far as where we were coming at it, it was, poles are there, the poles themselves are getting replaced. We're just putting the wires onto new poles and so they're being the same place. And so if they've worked sufficiently well, there was no indication that there was going to be a major change. Sean, do you have some insight to add?
Yeah, a couple of comments. We, in this hearing, we can't really talk about moving poles. One, it's their own company. Horizon owns the pole set. And two, they don't have rights, Horizon doesn't even have rights to move a pole. They'd have to select, they'd have to ask for rights, write a location to put a pole in somewhere other than where it is. They, they can, they could change them daily, but they can't, they can't move. And I, I'm certain what they would say is we could just have one more pole and you're still going to need to prune that tree. But while I have the floor real quick, I would mention, we, we knew the wires were going to go back to the top of the pole. We know that. We know that the standard, it was, it was, you know, it's been referenced in their communications. I would say there's not a street in town that applies to that standard. These are mature trees, so you, it's, it's your job to consider that. Because we're not, we're certainly not going to get ten feet to every tree. There's plenty of tree trunks in town that are rubbing up against thirteen eight lines all over town. I'm not proposing we do that, but there's, you know, mature trees are different than the fast-growing trees when they're coming up under. You need to train that tree. These trees are well beyond where they would have been trained. So you're, you're bumping into them where when you move up in the tree, you get into some other limbs, but there's different considerations. This tree is different than, say, the trees across from Will, Will's house. They're a couple hundred years old, but don't have a huge risk of falling over, and they're not fast-growing. So you need to keep that in mind. That's all for now.
All right. Well, you do need to make some progress here. So this first tree, as I said, is a hickory tree. Sally, you're, you're on and you're getting ready to jump to the other meeting. Did you have a comment on the first two trees? She's no longer on.
Okay, so she has a comment to leave right here in the chat, it's not part of the record, so she's going to read it. She wants to say she's concerned about the oats. She wants to assure us that removal of the limbs won't make the trees more vulnerable to landing on her house she just had.
That's number two and number three, is what she had expressed.
Right, I think in general, she's concerned about removing trees if there's going to be, will the leaves, trees be more vulnerable if you remove the limbs? Excellent answer for anyone.
Well, just because we discussed Sally's comment, it sounds like actually tree two, and I'm jumping from one for a minute here, and tree two and three. It sounds like the tree warden and Eversource are in agreement regarding pruning. Neither tree two and three are not being requested to be fully removed. I don't have to turn up to and rate, so. Since there's consensus there, do we, I think, vote to approve?
Well, what does, are Sally's concerns worth discussing? I guess that's a question for the tree experts in the room. Like if you remove eight inch, eight inch limbs, it, does it make the tree more vulnerable?
Well, that's a thing, we're, I mean, we're asking to remove the entire trees. You know, if, if the ability to remove those trees is denied, then we would have to do a pruning.
Well, on this one, this is, according to the, oh, one, the eight inch limbs removed, let's say they remove the entire tree.
This is, this is a list of proposed removals, right? Then, then is the process that the Arbers went through and made comments and then Eversource responded to those comments?
Uh, no, I made the comments in addition to when I submitted this initially. And Brian's comments are listed as the, of our tree warden comments.
Because there's a, oh, I see, it's a, it's a, it's a one in the prune column, not in the removal column.
So our, we're asking for removal of these trees. If we don't remove the tree, what I'm saying is an eight inch limb will need to be removed on tree number two and tree number three.
We have to vote, so that is.
Will that weaken the tree?
Anytime they are making a cut over six inches in diameter, we know that we're introducing decay into the tree. Something that where, you know, pruning a tree and there's imbalance in the tree makes it more likely that the tree uses weight in that direction that the tree could fall over because of the imbalance in the canopy of the tree, which is part of the reason why we're asking for removal.
These are huge trees too, the one.
Do you prefer?
I don't have to choose the two trees, I somehow wasn't able to get two and three. I got one and then I jumped to five, somehow I missed two, three and four.
Brian, do you have any input on pruning the eight inch? Do you think that's more to?
As I said, they're, they're, they're huge trees.
Yeah.
So removing an eight inch limb, I don't think it will affect.
As far as Sally's concerned about a tree being more likely than any other tree to fall over on her house? I mean, we have trees that fall that we don't ever think in a million years would fall, and then the trees that you think.
The size of these trees and eight inch limb removed, I don't think it'd balance the tree in any way. Because once again, the size of them. I don't see any damage being done for the limb, but.
Anyone else in planning board as far as which way we're leaning here on two and three, because it felt more straightforward?
Sign like two and three, that the backup plan on the resources to remove eight inch limb and our tree warden says that doing that one is okay. And that's the recommendation, I think that's.
Are we voting every line on this?
I'm going to go with two and three because those two were kind of the same scenario right now.
Same proper.
Yeah, but, but I mean, as, as a board, we're supposed to go, like, vote every line. I don't, I don't mean one by one, I just mean, do we, do we have to take an action on every tree in the list?
Formal vote?
I think so, because everyone's, I think we're supposed to hear, I used to get some.
Well, right now, just looking at two and three.
Yes.
You know, are we, are we, as a board, can we motion to approve the pruning as recommended by the tree warden? So we're seconded, okay, all in favor of supporting the tree warden's recommendation for tree two and three? That's the one removal? Okay. The two and three.
I also suggest that we just vote that every tree that the tree warden has agreed yes to removal, that we just approve all those and that's.
We could go knock that off.
So that would be four. That would be.
Twenty. Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-nine.
Thirty-one and thirty-two, thirty-five and thirty-seven. Thirty-seven, thirty-seven.
All right, so consent agenda of, as a board, we are agreeing with the, the removal of those trees identified by the tree warden as being satisfactory for removal. We're just giving removals and removal. It was, again, the list was for removal, approval was number four. Number twenty.
Just removal or approval or pruning as well?
But.
Just removal.
Let's do removal, let's do outright, tree can be removed, let's keep those down. So outright tree can be removed.
I have a question, I, I mean, we're, we're only deciding whether to yes or no on the tree being removed. Right. You know, we, are you thinking about whether or not to remove it or is that just?
It's a separate one, I do a, just remove straight and remove.
Yeah.
The line.
We voted on two and three to agree with the pruning, that already happened, right?
Yeah.
And we're just agreeing on the removal, the ones that the tree warden identified, tree number four for removal. Tree number twenty for removal, twenty-two for removal. Twenty-nine for removal. And.
Thirty-one, thirty.
Not thirty-one, thirty-seven.
Thirty-five and thirty-seven, right?
Yes, thirty-five and thirty-seven. So one, two, three, four, five, six. There are six trees that the tree warden has identified, and yes, they are acceptable for removal. Motion two.
Motion two, approval of those.
Approved the six trees for removal. Seconded, and moved by Rob, seconded by Frank, all those in favor of any further discussion?
I'm just curious, can I say picture of twenty-nine?
I was going to show, we have twenty, I was going to show which one is. So here's twenty.
And twenty is that little low maple.
There was only a question about twenty-nine.
That long skinny oak.
All right, fine, and then, just thirty-five, thirty-seven.
The, the one way in the background on the left?
It's the one at thirty-seven, it's got a split and it's got a dead branch in the middle and it's.
So it's not by a pole, okay.
It looks more green than it is because it's got, it's being choked by some maple, a Virginia creeper or what it is. What's that, a poison ivy, right? Brian, are you comfortable with, now that things have leaked out since you were looking at them? Are you still comfortable with these six trees that you recommended for?
I'm comfortable with my.
Are we all comfortable at this table to, we made the motion? And all in favor of those six trees for removal? So, knocking those out. We're down to thirty, yeah, we're down to twenty-eight trees to discuss. So going back to tree number one. Residents that live closest to tree number one are here this evening. Trees leaning away from the wires and noted in my picture is not giving justice to how much the tree itself leans away from the wires. Not ten feet, but. I guess the question is, is ever sort, if, um, you have the authority to prune, what kind of pruning would be done? I mean, not considering lopping it off, are you, or I mean, what?
We can't cut an entire tree in half, no.
Yeah.
We have to try and accommodate as best we can for the installation of the wires, which would include, uh, rather large limbs. Mingers.
This tree leaning away from the wires to take anything off, but you'd just be taking sucker growth toward, not sucker growth, smaller. Um, limbs towards the wires, the rest of the main trunk of the tree. In this picture leans to the left and away from the wires. And if you're right, I don't believe you need to take anything big off of that. Yeah, so that's the question, how much pruning would be required within that ten foot radius if that is?
Well, that's the thing, we, you know, we've established a window or what we attempted to get is that ten by ten by fifteen, oh, we know with, you know, with the existing wires where they are, you know, in certain places, these wires are going, you know, wires, one wire is on one side of the tree, one wire is on the other side of the tree. You know, it's been impossible for us to get that standard spec that we try and prove generally anything else too. Um, you know, because those trees were existing before we put the wires up, so, you know, by law, we really can't do anything to them. And a lot of these should be taken to hearing before and have been denied, um, even though, you know, strongly we either say initially and, uh, initially with, you know, reliability, um. You know, when we're installing these wires, we still want to try and maintain that window, that ten by ten by fifteen window. So we're going to have to prune to accommodate that five feet up, which means we're gonna have to increase that clearance zone that we've been established for a number of years with existing wires.
So Brian, just because I'm looking at this tree out there, but I'm trying to identify which trunk goes with which branches. There are two different greens I'm seeing. The hickory tree that we're discussing is the one that the branches are, are fairly tall and thin and branching out to the left and up higher above than the pole, is that correct?
Yes.
And I don't know what the other kind of scrub looking brush, if those are just, like you said, they're not suckers, but short limbs? Or is that, is that a different tree that I'm seeing there?
In this picture, I can't tell, um.
There's another tree, there's, I believe it's a maple that's past that.
So that's in the background?
Yeah, that's in the background.
The home and wall.
So I think that the recommendation of the tree warden is to attempt to prune, to find that window around these wires. Um, anyone in the planning board have any further discussion on that tree?
There's a one mark right between four and thirty inch. Is that, was, is that a recommendation for?
That one is the size class of the tree, so it's saying it's between twenty-four and thirty inches.
Yeah, we, we broke, we break down the size class that way because, uh, it's the way that we actually.
So it's not beside where to cut or what you're trying to take off or how high, it's just a diameter.
It's a diameter, it's a diameter, yeah.
Because when you got one under the prune, then it's always in case that the.
Um, so I noted that, I, it's been noted to me that the recommendation of the tree warden did not include pruning. So I guess my question to you, Brian, is your thoughts on pruning?
As long as there's no large limbs removed from the tree, there's not, structurally, there's not much to the tree. It goes straight up and then leans out. Um, if you start taking larger limbs off of it. I would agree to having the smaller stuff that's reaching out towards the wires.
But what is the authority here in terms of? If ever source has their, their pruning requirements for installing their systems and if the town has the jurisdiction over the shade trees? Like what's the authority here in terms of what?
The planning board technically, our authority mostly resides with, under the scenic road act, so we have authority over these trees.
Right. So if, if we were to deny.
They can appeal to those.
Just this left word, yeah, then they have it, thank you.
Okay. Thanks, so the, 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 and when, what are the discreet actions that, sorry, I haven't been through one of these hearings before. What are the discreet recommendations that we would, so there's obviously remove the tree, we've already voted. We've voted a prune only as, as needed up to an eight inch limb, right? Um, is, can we kind of make, do we make up whatever? Are there, there's, this is a multiple choice question or this is an open ended answer?
There will be a decision that will both, which will say will go through, number one tree is, one of the small branches, you know, whatever.
So, but so, so if, if Brian's saying, I only want to prune the small branches, do we have to articulate what that means? In, in a decision, and I guess I'm just trying to understand that.
I don't think we can articulate beyond what we're getting from our tree warden, which is to remove the small branches. None of us are going to be there.
I don't think that structure needs to be removed, i- in this tree, structure doesn't need to be removed. Small limbs that are coming up. Towards wires.
I think going back to what you're saying is, are we just approving, uh, pruning or removal? And whatever the pruning requirements are to meet their anti-spec so that they fall within the, the confines of the.
There's no way a pruning is going to meet the ten feet requirement there.
Right.
So.
Unless you lock it off, right?
You start informing the tree.
And, and, and by sort of saying pruning only and not pruning the structure of the tree, I'm just trying, just trying to understand, like. Then you're gonna lay your wires and it's gonna not conform to your preferred pruning distances, which introduces risk, is that what I mean?
Yes.
That's.
So there would be, we're, you're technically not supposed to get within two and a half, about two and a half feet of electric by a conductor at that voltage. So, you know, we've already got a situation where a lot of the wires on that street are in contact with trees or definitely within that two and a half feet. We're doing it upgraded for safety reasons, for reliability reasons, so we certainly want to avoid, uh, running into the exact same situation that we're trying to fix. Um, and you know, with the restrictions that have been presented to us, which I understand what they are, you know, we, we don't wanna go through this project and leave it in a unsafe situation or, or leave a substantial amount of risk, um, from trees falling into wires or, or trees coming in contact with the wires. You know, that's something that we can accommodate for to a degree, but you know, poles are where they are, you know, so we can really only leave the wires, you know, away from the trees so much.
How did you handle prior meeting to work when you came back to where that town had said, no, we can't?
Well, the law's set up so that, you know, we don't really have, uh, free ones.
So you just had to go ahead and put it right, less than the five to ten feet.
Well, I mean, I would say typically with, like, this, this situation is somewhat, I would say, would be the, the, the size of the trees and the location. You know, I, I haven't really run into this particular situation before, to be honest.
So, and if, if the tree warden is saying that the structure does not need to be removed, do you both agree on what structure is?
Uh, do we agree, I mean?
Because I, I don't have to say, he says the word structure.
I mean, I, I just, I know Brian's a long time, I, I respect his opinion, that's all, but he's, he's working that utility industry.
Yeah.
So I think we do have differing opinions on what definitely is safe and not safe.
Right.
Because it, you know, the, the existing wires look at it now, it looks not, it's because of something going on. But, you know, again, there's, there's risk that's inherent.
Yeah.
Without you. I just think structure is too subjective a word, if you said something like less than eight inches, more than eight inches, six inches, or something that's a little more measurable, then I think that's something.
Well, my take is, when you're thinking structure, you're thinking the predominant trunk of the tree.
Eight inches is a big structure piece.
Okay.
I'm talking two, three, four inch stuff, which a lot of that is.
I mean, can, can we set a standard of, uh, of, of, you know, diameter above range that you're okay with us moving without having further discussion?
Depends on the tree, I suppose.
I mean, I feel like, you know, if you want to make progress with this hearing tonight, we should probably set some sort of parameter as to what, uh, you know, if we're going through this list, we've only got six that would reach removal. You know, this project is going to happen, you know, so we're gonna need to prune some significant stuff out of a lot of these trees, you know, um. So I feel like we should figure out at least, you know, what we can.
Should there be a ratio to the, to the structure or to the, you know? Terrible, the tree versus branches going off, it's, you know?
Maybe the trunk, the trunk size is the measure of the tree, can we do some sort of like, um?
This first tree is a twenty-four to thirty inch caliber tree, so you have a recommendation?
I don't, I think you're gonna get lost in the weeds. Uh, it, it, I don't, I don't. You have to find some common ground between where Brian is and where the ever source groups. You, you have to, right? Because I'm not where Brian is, I'm not where they are, and you guys shouldn't be either. There's some trees frankly that probably need to come down if Brian doesn't want to come down, and if they have to appeal it to the select board, the select board's probably gonna err on the side of public safety and reliability. The ever source, they're probably just come back and take them down. There, I, I, a better question might be to them, in this list, which trees could you just wipe off as asking for removal and just concede to prune more than we've already done and just, just take them off the list?
Uh.
Is, is there?
Well, I wanted to.
Implos.
I wanted to knock out tree one since residents are here for tree one.
Yeah.
And can we, we agreed to pruning all item. Around the tree, I mean, I'm looking at that picture and I, it, it looks like there's a lot, most of the stuff within five feet is small. That's some of the stuff, but it's pointing the other way. It's not, that looks like that branch is going off the other way, it's.
Oh, you look at the, where the top of the old pole is?
Yeah.
You go across the left, there's, see?
Well, Google Street photo shows it, you know? It looks like you've kind of pretty much lost that.
What do the residents feel?
It's kind of a little bit of a hitch.
Are you concerned with safety or is, I guess it's?
It's, it's far enough away from the house. I mean, I guess I'm kind of impartial in terms of, I guess, the pound.
Okay, do that.
It's kind of leaning
Different.
Towards another direction. I'm just trying to make sense out of, you know, I've seen wires go down in the street, uh, right there, I only been up two years. Um, and I'm thinking more about the voltage and curious about how, how that, um, you know, how common is that? And, you know, this elevated voltage, et cetera, because I know I've seen the wires go down and sparks fly, um, you know, the lower voltage, so I'm just. That's what I'm thinking about, this particular tree, uh, you know, I'm fine with.
You're okay with whatever?
Yeah, that particular tree, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just so we get an idea with the, um, the four kilovolts that are currently on the street, you know, if you do get, you want something like that, close contact with a tree, a lot of times it gets a smaller, you know, and it's something that you can react to. You know, put a sleeve up, just done in the past with thirteen point eight volts, when you get, uh, contact between those wires and the tree, you can get conflagration, so. Certainly something we want to remove.
Uh, is there something you can live with? What, what would you, any between what he's looking at and what you ideally would like?
I would like removal of the tree.
Uh, yeah, and I don't know.
It's a very important piece of equipment that's going near that tree. Um, the residents seem okay with whatever, you know, the decision that you and the board come up with, um, you know, it's something that we're something that if we had to prune the tree, our concern being the tree, you know, uh, then is leaning further away from the equipment, um, so, uh, you know, we would like to remove the tree.
There's a switch on this pole which makes it unique from the other trees on the, on the list here. What access do you need to that switch and how does the tree impact the fact that there's a switch there? Like, d- does that change your pruning guidelines for that particular location or?
Well, uh, so the current state of the wires in the street, we have an eight foot crossarm. We've got two wires on each side of the crossarm, I think it's certain, it's three wires. Um, so what we're gonna be doing is the new wires we put actually in a smaller area, so it's gonna be three wires that are gonna come up together, what they call spacer wire. The thing is, when that spacer wire is going to a device, you need to spread those wires back out again. And so that's the issue with this particular spot is that those wires, even though we're gonna be picking up a smaller area, because that device is on that pole, we're gonna need to spread those wires back out again, that eight foot crossarm.
So something like, um, tree number one needs to be removed, make the motion to remove, um, tree number one.
Second.
I second that.
Further discussion on tree one?
Well, I would see a tree warden. Uh, respond to. Do you want, if, if you're voting on whether or not to remove it?
I just made a motion.
Motion would be for removal. Yep.
If I agree to that, why don't I agree to the rest of them once?
You already have a fair.
Well, because you were looking at the health of the tree, we have some different, I guess, A, we've been shown a Google Street photo which shows that pruning will make this it just lopped the one side of the tree off. I guess the question is, is there's risk because of the equipment going on this pole that's unique from the other pole?
It's a healthy tree. It's a healthy tree that if you take some pruning to it.
And I guess the other question is, is the residents that would be most impacted at this point? Your, I guess you, you, you have the option of a tree that's lopped off on one side, potentially might fall towards your yard if it's pruned heavily to accommodate these wires.
With storms in the past, past year or two, if this, these trees haven't come down. They're fairly established and.
That's a solid tree.
Yeah.
I've seen that blow in the storms and it barely moves, that hickory's strong.
Again, but, but that's not really the argument.
Yeah.
You understand, the tree's healthy and strong, it's in the way, that's the problem.
Uh, I guess I heard two different requirements from ever source, one is that you would, your standard is you want to remove everything ten feet below, ten feet to the side, and say fifteen feet above the wires.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's our specification.
But then you said, like, for absolute purposes of safety, you don't want anything within two and a half feet of the wires.
But that's the minimum approach that this business has established by, uh, in, uh, in, uh, OSHA.
Specifically for a tree to be?
No, it's for, it's for anything, it could be.
Yeah, for an object, whereas a tree is like moving with the wind, I think, which is why there's an extra buffer.
And accommodating for growth, because when we do prune that tree, we're not clearly prying it every year. Uh, we try to establish a cycle of time for pruning that, so we need to accommodate that growth as well.
Right, and so it kind of seems like, you know, they might, in some cases, they might compromise where like you, um, you might want to remove all the small branches sticking out within this large ten foot clearance. But if the main trunk of the tree passes five feet from the wires, but clean the branches off, that, that might be reasonable, right?
Hey, it would do, I mean, for our immediate needs, it would suffice.
Mm-hmm.
But again, you know, then you run into actual risk going forward because those branches that we removed are gonna be going that faster. What else, and to grow that faster, so we're gonna back into those wires prior to probably our next pruning cycle, which would be four years.
Like your four years?
Four, four to five years. So, yeah, that's what we're managing by the state.
And is there a specific location for the switch that's required? Is that, does that have some flexibility where you have better access maybe someplace away from?
It's a private.
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 Yeah. I mean, I'm concerned just with this, these requirements solely because, to an extent, then if anything, and are all trees essentially a risk that are on the same side as power lines? And yet, we're, you know, we're attempting to have shade along our roadways to reduce heat. So there's got to be a balance, and there certainly are plenty of trees throughout town that are over the wires and, you know, anything can fall at any time, but. Uh, we have the motion and it's been moved and seconded for removal of this tree.
I would, I would just say that, like, I completely agree. I think there's gonna be places where we're gonna be asking, we're going to be voting that the tree not come down when it's closer than 10 feet, right? But in certain situations, when I look at this tree, and I look at the geometry of the tree that we saw on Google Maps, and I think about the fact that there's a switch here, and so everything's diverging from its, you know, bundle, I just feel like there are some cases where it makes sense to remove trees. Um, as much as I love the shade farm row.
All right, are we comfortable to vote? So I'm always in favor of removal of tree number one. Overly. Because of the unique circumstances. All right, Heidi's recommending that we look at the pruning only question ones that were.
Everstor's, do you have a list of trees that you want to say, yeah, we can accept pruning? I may not like to, but we want to consider.
Yeah. Yeah, we can certainly, uh.
Do you have a consent agenda?
Um, looking at tree, uh, number five, uh, number six, number seven. Uh, number nine.
And it does agree with the ones that we are saying that we would be able to prune only, yes.
That seems to be indicated in that way.
Yeah, number, uh, so I would like to remove, uh, number 10.
All right, so we'll do that for discussion. And any others?
Um, sorry, uh.
All right, so let's see, five, six, seven.
Nineteen.
So after nine, what's the next one?
Uh, nineteen.
Nineteen.
Uh, twenty-three. Twenty-five. Five.
So here's tree number five.
How about 31 and 32? Regarding the, maybe the pruning, remove the leaders.
Again, I would like to, I'm, we're amenable to pruning, but I, my preference would be to remove those trees, because especially as the, as we previously discussed, the size of the cuts that I'm making on those trees are very large. They are certainly very large trees. Uh, but I, I, because of the size cut that I'm making on those trees, it's worth the discussion.
So those need to go to discussion. So the ones that you're not, that were comfortable with in agreement on pruning, we've got working backwards, 25, 23.
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
Nine, seven, six, five.
Nine, seven, six, five. So consent agenda motion to, um, approve pruning of those, we've got six trees. Five, six, seven, nine. But that's.
It's, that's, that's a tree. Tree number nine, the removal, correct?
Is that?
Yes, you guys are denying, but that's for denying the removal, but.
Right, we're denying the removal. We are agreeing to pruning, pruning of five, but six.
I think we should define pruning a little bit too, because is that, is that a 10 by 15 by 10 foot window? Or is that, you know, branches six inches and less? Or is that, um, a five-foot window? Like, what are? And Brian, I think I'm, I'm sort of interested in your, in your thought.
Yeah, I mean, I guess if we, I mean, I guess then we kind of have to look at the tree. I mean, number five is a pretty large tree. So is that, is that it?
Okay.
So that's our.
Or, or we could say, you know, no, no pruning of the main trunk or, I don't, I just don't know if there's a way to. I mean, it, does pruning, does the definition of pruning exclude the main trunk? Would you ever loft a tree off like that?
No.
As a pruning?
Okay. But, you know, something else that we need to, need to consideration is that, when these wires are being transferred, um, you know, we already have people already working close proximity to them. So in order to have ample room for them to actually perform the work as well.
So on this picture of this tree, when you're looking, it's going up five feet higher where the wires are, are you looking at like the two limbs off or one limb off?
Yeah, I don't, I, this is where, I mean, I don't know what pruning means. Is it gonna be so ugly that? But I, you know, we're not out there. I mean, I'm, I'm looking at, you know, if you get 10 feet off of that wire, that pretty means, that means you have to take the tree down. But we're not approving 10 feet off that wire then, so.
What is your definition of pruning? Our specification?
Anything within 10 feet.
Correct. Yes.
Any substance of that.
Correct.
Is it 10 feet cube? No, 15 square.
Yeah, it's actually, it's actually 10 feet to either side of the most primary cutters, feet below and 15 feet above.
So what about going back and front?
Well, the wire runs along the roadway. Uh, so it's something that, you know, imagine that, you know, two that running along the roadway, that's what we're looking to maintain.
The next thing here, because.
It, it depends on the tree and what you're, what the proportion of the weight.
I mean, you know, if it comes down, I understand, you know, the issue here is, you know, because I, I can't see exactly, you know, what needs to be done to every single tree in order to accommodate, you know, the space for the guys to work. You know, um, it's just, uh, even so, I don't know exactly where those wires are gonna be going through that tree, you know, until they're actually in place, you know, so, I mean, we're certainly willing to work with the town, you know, on a tree-by-tree basis to try and make the decision as to what would be easy cut, you know, since that's gonna be labor intensive.
Yeah. Brian, can we live with pruning on this tree?
If you start to, well, if you start to move limbs off of this tree to check the wires, you're talking some major branches.
But there's still some growth on the other side of the tree and there's some growth up top. Looks like here.
You know, by contrast, number seven looks like there's a hole in it where that conductor's been run. Minimal, probably might be required there.
Looks like.
Up in the screen, we've got number six. I mean, it sounds like number five is.
It was number nine. Number nine is one that the tree owner says we should prune, and that's what, um, they're saying. So we got, we got that one. We nailed that one.
Well, number, number nine, we're recommending removal of the tree. Brian had said to, to prune that tree. Um, it's something that, part of the reason we're recommending removal of this species, uh, being an ash tree, uh, that tree already has Emerald Ash Ward. If I identify that and brought that up to Brian, uh, he believed that, uh, pruning the one limb that's on the tree would, uh, accommodate our wires. And I agree, pruning of that one limb will accommodate our wires. But the reason we're recommending removal is that tree is going to die from Emerald Ash Ward and will become a concern in the not-too-distant future. Not the next one or two years, but within the next five years, that will be a tree that we are putting in the tree.
Brian, I understand. I mean, I know we have taken down a number of ash trees in town because of Emerald Ash Ward. Um, did you notice this as well, Brian, that there was an infection of Emerald Ash Ward with this tree on number nine?
Um, I did not. Uh, well, I, I, no. Um. Once again, I feel like taking a live tree down is not a good idea. Um, yes, I suppose there's a chance of this tree taking off, getting that Emerald Ash Ward. If that's the case, let's take the polyash trees and tie them down. I mean, the tree's live, it's still growing. I'm not in favor of taking live trees down. It's, even if it's a little bit diseased, let it go for them. We have to take them down.
Well.
Three years. Close the wires and the town.
Yeah. I mean, we might lose the tree, but I think we've got a, agreed on pruning on some of these trees or we're never gonna get anywhere.
We'll leave.
So, so we have those seven?
Trees that are closer to.
So I move that, uh, trees five, six, seven, nine. Nineteen, twenty-three, twenty, uh, five.
The primer.
This is the easiest, back from the week, I think this one will also smoke the twat in. The tree's still there.
I would second Brian's motion.
Mm-hmm.
Moving second on approving and pruning.
But no.
And not removal on those trees. So all in favor, pruning and no removal on the trees identified.
Oh, all right.
All right.
That leaves us with what? We, we were talking prune five. Prune six. So prune seven.
Nine.
Twenty. So it went back to.
Number eight is the most.
Number eight. Number eight is one of the trees that Mr. Fennell has written about and, um, concerned about.
Yeah, I have good pictures of tree number eight. Can I, um, is it, the, the major concern is the proximity of the trunk to the lines? Or the vertical, it's like a very distinct tree here. You're gonna raise the wire, so I can see that it's possible that, it's hard to tell from the perspective, but it's possible that, like, one of those large leaders might have to be removed. But what is the removal concern here? Is it the proximity of the trunk to the wires?
Yes, both the proximity of the trunk to the wires. It's certainly something that if we did remove that one limb, as I discussed previously, that, that size cut that you're making on the tree would introduce decay and, or weaken that tree more.
It's a white oak and the vegetation is given its age and size is for pruning. If, if, if there's that limb, that one limb needs to be pruned, but not, I, I don't know, I can't tell. I see one overhanging limb that potentially.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
Be with the wires, the new wires being taller.
Can we, can we table that and keep talking sort of consent styles? Can we just kind of skim through a couple of these? Because number 10, we don't have pictures of, right? That's the next one, one or second to eight. We don't have pictures. We only have the the recommendation from Brian, so.
That seems to be mine, too.
But when we've, when they listed off their list of trees that they're okay with not removing, this one is not on it. So I'm just curious, why it's in the prune column here?
Brian put it on the prune column.
Oh, Brian. Okay, got it.
It says, uh, there, it says prune as removing six inches long.
That's what they're gonna have to do.
That's what we need to do if we weren't able to remove this tree.
And you're again, again saying that size of a cut introduces decay, which puts the tree out of.
Correct, and also note that that's an ash tree that we discussed, but Emerald Ash Ward is a tree that's, with the proximity of the lines that we will be removing in the future.
It's imminent that tree could die at some point.
Yeah. Yes.
Brian, you agree that with the Emerald Ash Ward, uh, lifetime of five years? I'm just kind of curious, because I just don't, I don't really.
The ash ward is going after all the ash trees.
Yeah, yeah, but once it has it, is it five years or, it's just too hard to tell, it's true, it's hard to guess, so.
Especially a large tree like this. You don't have the picture of this one?
No.
I don't think we have 11 either.
We don't have 11.
Sensible to all the ash trees next?
Well, they're only. Yeah, they're.
The only other ash.
Yeah. I mean, we already decided on number nine, so.
There's certainly the larger ones.
Do you have a picture of 28?
This is 28, 28. Ash, another, I guess I would.
This is one of the larger trees in town. It's one of the largest ones on the list.
And this is one that is a particular concern. This is part of three trees that are in a row that are, that are particularly suggestive, yeah. It's a good way to put it, or not, on a row.
Cross the street.
It's 20.
27, clearly is one of those.
It's 20, 26, 27, 28, all of those three. Those three trees. Are 28, 20. Yes.
26.
After scenic.
Those three trees are in a row. They're right next to each other. I, I think we would all agree that we're not gonna, removal is not an option.
That's right.
So pruning.
If that was gonna feel, they're gonna feel that.
Gotta be careful with pruning.
Well, I think that's what we're looking for, is a little bit more clarity on definition and what to write into a decision. Because we don't know how to, how to articulate what pruning should look like. So if you have any suggestions for what to suggest, for how to say it, and what, what limitations to put on, we would definitely be open to hearing that.
Yes, Sean, please.
Chris offered to look at specific trees. I, I wouldn't take them up. Chris offered to look at specific trees. I, I wouldn't take them up on, they'll have to look at every single tree that's going to be pruned. I'd take them up on the offer to look at those three trees. Ask that they identify what needs to be pruned. But those wires are going to be in those trees. They already are.
Well, Brian, help us, which, which ones further down? Because we can group them all together and put them.
Uh, it's still in front of 177.
Thirty and 31. Uh, 30 is exactly a private tree. It was behind the stone wall.
We think it's 33.
So it's 20, 26, 27, 28, and 33? Got it, Sean? Thirty, that's 33. It's, it's right on the screen.
Oh, you have it there?
That's 33.
The one?
Oh, that's the one further down.
That is the one.
Uh, there's a bigger one before that, I think.
So this one is 32.
Looks like it's, can you back up? Let's see if there's a, yeah, that's.
That's 32.
Oh, that was pretty iconic. I know that one.
Do you think any of those trees in that stretch will actually drive any trees there? Could be an adverse effect to remove any of them.
Jim, I'm sorry, I can't hear.
I, I, for taking a drive-through there tonight, any of those trees along that stretch would certainly be an adverse effect to remove.
I think we're
Change the scenery and the character of.
I, I think one of the things that I, um, I'm, that I'm thinking about is which trees are we going to ask for specific like pruning permissions on, right? So 26, 27, 28. Maybe there's one further down, but which ones are the ones that we need, that we want to make sure that we're, you guys are tagging what's going to be pruned and getting, sort of having a conversation about it.
I mean, we could identify any trees that were a certain size. I would narrow things down quite a bit. Certain size we need by diameter.
So we got it on the screen right now, it's 33. And that's a, uh, 36, no, that's a 30 to 36 inch diameter tree.
Yeah, but 26 is a 24 to 30, I think.
I mean, there's the three that are together that are the most iconic and linked together are 26, 27, 28. To block them together as one special review, that I think we all agree, we all know, we all envision what those three trees look like, and those definitely we will, uh, I would make a motion to approve.
But a motion is not removed.
Yeah, motion not, original motion not removed.
And to, and to require, but any pruning?
Have a special review, um, in a consultation if it's not, I mean, we, we don't want to come back to our playground if we're on the ground and there's an agreed special, uh, some, some kind of agreement on what would need to be done to accommodate the wires and retain the health of the tree to specialities.
Still going to be, I think, a difference of, is there something where we decide pruning is six inch? An inch and something?
I don't think we can say, if you have a nub that's six inches, it's ticking out in the way, and, you know, cutting six inches off of a nub, that wouldn't make a difference. But if it's, and you could have a three inch, that's a primary, I mean, I don't know, I don't know enough, I don't know if we can identify it by inch.
I mean, could Brian observe the cutting and advise at that time?
No.
And when you say you could consult with the town, what does that mean in other towns? Like, you have this couple of special trees that you want to do a consult. What does that mean in other towns?
I would typically look at a tree ward when we come to a, to a rate, so you know what everybody's comfortable with, uh, moving the tree.
Does that feel like a process that we're, I mean, that, that's the process that's being proposed for these three trees, I think, because it would be a consult of the tree ward. Does that seem good for the board?
That we would be supporting we were, we had a motion, let's start with a motion not to remove. That we all agree those three trees are not to be removed. A motion to not remove and a second.
Well, we should do the rest of them.
Yeah, let's do it all together.
I mean, for those three good trees, you know, what I would have to do is, I would have to be the muscle, I would have to be out there, Brian would have to be out there, I would probably have to be out there with the workers who are actually, who are installing the wires, you know, in the contract as well. Be, be able to figure out exactly what's needed to be done in order to.
I'm just trying to figure out if we need to make a motion that we all agree not to approve, and then have a second motion that we agree for pruning only under following consultation with.
Yeah, I think that's what I was asking.
Just bun, just bundle it all into one.
Bundle it in one motion.
One motion, three trees.
Four, four trees.
Four, which, so we, we, what's the fourth one? Are we saying?
33.
33.
26, 27, 28, and 33.
All right. All in favor of the, the non-removable and special review for those four trees?
All right. Yeah, I think that's, I should have said pruning instead, I think that's what I
I know that you're getting jumbled as far as what you left here. Started back there.
So I like the idea of just, of looking at the size of the trees, that kind of helps narrow us down. I mean, we're looking at, let's say, all the 24 through 36 inch ones in those columns, and that might be a parameter that we can use for discussion, and then as we get smaller.
Yeah, so we make the larger trees, and they're the ones that are most contentious.
All the trees are contentious.
Should we, anything larger than 24 inch?
Start to look at.
Or start, you want to only look at the 24, 30 inch? 24, 30 inch, we've got tree number eight. Number nine.
Nine's already.
Nine's already a prune, all right.
14, 18. Okay, I mean, can we start at the other end? Can we look at the 36 plus? Just because it feels easier.
There's, uh,
Oh, yeah, 35, 31 and 32. But one we already
All right, so there's, there's two trees, right?
Yeah, 31 and 32 are the biggest ones that I left.
Yeah, so number eight and number, and number eight, four, anti-three trees, eight, 14 and 18.
No, she's, she was going after doing the opposite, doing the biggest trees first.
Oh, okay.
She was saying the ones that were 36 plus, there were only, um, There's only two of them. And they're, so they're huge trees. Brian has recommended pruning only, and then EverSource has stated the size of the limbs that would likely need to be pruned at 20 inches and 12 inches, you know, I mean, there's a tree that would know themselves.
You're looking at 31 and 32?
31 and 32, yeah.
Those of them are oak trees. Uh, 31, the discussion was removing a 20 inch oak leader going over the road. And on 32, discussion was pruning a 12 inch oak limb going over the road. We have.
Yeah, we have pictures of both of these. Um, Annie made sense to email to her Google Drive to, she emailed the board like a couple hours ago. 31 and 32. You can clearly see on 31, that 20 inch leader.
Yeah.
So we're recommending a move of tree number 31 because, uh, there is a large dead leader hanging over the road that we're going to have to remove. Remove that, the rest of that tree is probably going to decline and die eventually, but, um, moving things along, it's not going to be a huge impact to our wires necessarily.
So this, I might, I don't even see the wires at all.
They're across the street from the tree.
They're across the street.
Oh, it's just the leader that's going to, that's dead that you're worried about?
Yes.
I see. Brian's recommending one or two, please, take off the leader, the dead wood.
No, he's only recommending removal of dead wood, which is different than removal of that leader, because the entire leader is dead, but, uh, the substantial, that leader is in decline, and that's why we're recommending removal of the entire leader.
Okay.
I mean, the bark is gone from the leader, right, right where it separates from the trunk, right?
I mean, in this big of a situation, if we remove that dead wood and leave the living part of that tree, it's almost going to have a problem.
I mean, if this large branch is removed.
We're recommending, as August said, that we'll treat them down, because if we just remove that part, it's going to be, you're probably wrong.
Um, so there, I'm, I think I'm getting a little terminology myself. When you say the dead wood, are you talking about the 20 inch leader?
No, there's the dead wood that's attached to the 20 inch leader.
The dead wood is the end, I've talked about.
Just the end of the 20 inch leader.
But if you were to come down to where it forks.
Yeah, and make the cut at the, where the 20 inch leader leaves, leaves the central trunk. Like, that's removing more than dead wood, right? But it's just the, just the leader that's decaying.
So that decay actually goes down into the leader itself, which is why we're saying we have to remove that entire leader.
Right, I think.
You find that and half the trees are on top.
The decision is, do you want to watch it die and then take, pick up the cost, or EverSource is offering to pay to take it down?
So can you put your cursor on the, um, where the leader leaves the trunk, right there? So that's
This one or this one? There's kind of two split forks up.
The, the bottom one, because it's all missing its bark. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, right there, so.
I guess.
I mean, the problem's at the base, if you zoom into that.
I think you're like, if this is all dead as well, or?
I'm just, I'm not, I'm not on risk.
Is this where the problem? I mean, we can just remove the dead wood off of that one. Again, this, that tree doesn't necessarily affect, we don't put a power ability to wire it up, so I don't think we need to have too much discussion on that, it's.
I don't know, all the trees around it, this one not particularly it looks like there's enough other growth around it, um, which one, this is what, remember again, like this is
31.
31, so it is a big tree, there's growth and it is.
Um, Sean, do you, if, if this becomes, like, say there's a, this 20 inch leader is cut, and the tree decays over the next I mean, how does, how does, how do you look at this situation? EverSource is offering to remove the tree now, or, I mean, you're the one who has to remove it later, right?
I don't even think Brian could tell you that that's a healthy tree. We're just going to watch it die in a sad death in the next couple of years, especially after they own a lot of water infiltration from the brunt. I mean, it's not a great tree.
Okay, so it sounds like it.
Yeah.
I think it would be a smart, a wise decision fiscally as well.
Okay, can, can we look?
Take EverSource up on things at times. Brian's not going to tell you to cut a tree down that's got a leaf on it. Let's just make that clear.
Fair enough.
He's not going to do that.
And can you, what about 32, the next one? You've got pictures of it, I mean. Uh, no, you were zoomed in on that, I think. Can you zoom out?
Not the one. That's 33, that's it. Not coming up.
No, it's the picture before that.
32 is the one straddling the stone wall.
Yes, so we have two pictures of that here, and then we went closer. Yeah, this one. And I can see a lot of dead wood at the top. Is it, can I, is that, yeah.
Does kind of look like you're if you prune what's close to the wires, you're taking the live part of the canopy away, and the other part is dead-ish.
But there's a bottom section that's growing up, 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 it's lower area.
That's a tree that's applying a wire.
Was that, Sean?
Do we? I'm, I'm inclined to, my, my gut says, just based on pictures and the brief discussion, we remove 31 and I, I guess if you block it where that dead branch is ticking off, then does that just kill the tree and you just, we're stalling? Inevitable, I mean, it'd be nice to think that but I guess if it's short, then it
I think they're going to prune the live side.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, the whole top got pruned off, but you just had the, the lower section, then in it'd, it'd be nice to think that that lower section would bush out, but I don't know enough about.
The problem with it bushing out is it's going to bush right into the wire.
Right. Okay, so how does the board feel about, these are two very large trees, some of the larger ones on the list, but 31 and 32. They both look like they're struggling. Motion to remove 31, 32.
I'm not sure why you're saying remove 32 when the I mean, I mean, it does seem like that's one could be pruned.
Right, pruning is
Isn't that 32?
That's 32.
Yeah.
How much would you have to prune to get closer to the wire? You have to get rid of almost everything, you have left to
I'm going to guess. Yeah, I mean, if it's it's just, um, they specifically made that note on other trees that will be damaged in recovery, and I didn't see anything like that.
All right, let's go, I, I shouldn't have said that, motion, um, the motion, but we have to vote it down to start over. No second, okay, let's just, okay, so 31, I think there's consensus on 31.
Remove.
Motion to remove 31.
Some of
Okay, moved in second is for removal of tree 31. All right, all those in favor, removal of tree 31. 31 only removed. 32.
I think I got something else to do.
I think there's, uh, inclination, and I, I know standing there, I remember, I know I stood there and I took a picture of the face because it does have that hole, but it is, it was very lovely to stand there underneath that shade and I, I guess I am inclined to try pruning. If it dies, um, and I guess the pruning, it I know everything that I can.
I have a hard time with the picture, because if I zoom in, I can see I have a hard time with the picture, because if I zoom in, I can see that the top of the new pole. And it just, it's really unclear to me, like, how much of.
They have done like, prune twelve inches.
So that one over the road.
Yeah, I think that's, that has a notable.
Yeah, yeah.
What are you, you're that camera, sorry.
It's a notable tree, from what I recall, seeing. I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to be safe.
You're pruning only?
Yeah. Pruning, yeah.
Mission.
All right, so a motion to approve pruning of tree thirty-two. Someone said moved in second did, all those in favor of pruning on tree thirty-two?
So eight, we still don't have something yet.
All right, eight, we're back to eight, let's go back to eight.
Eight, I think we were looking at that, and it looked like, to me, it looked like a prune only.
This is again, one that the neighbor has, the resident has been here before regarding this tree, strong and perfect, so. Motion to approve pruning only of tree number eight. Moved in second did, all those in favor of pruning tree number eight?
The one, the last ash, I think.
Still have to the ash question on number ten, right?
The last, the last ash one.
Oh, I don't have any picture. I don't have that, there's actually.
We don't have a picture, so.
EverSource is saying we can remove this six-inch limb.
All right, so. Not having a picture of it. Motion to prune. They can, I mean, I know there's, there is the ash issue, but if there's the ash that's still surviving, if you have some ash trees, I don't know. What the status of the emerald horror is, is right now, I mean. So we thinking that it was infected and it's, it died off in the winter and it's just failing because it had previous infection, or was there a visible current active infection?
Number ten.
I was able to see, uh, the exit holes of the bore on that tree when I inspected it.
Number ten?
Yes.
And I'm just thinking to cider hill with all the trees that we, we took out because of the emerald. I think it's. I think we, if there's a visible infection. And we've, we've got three trees that are further down the road that we wanna keep, so.
It's one of the huge, it's one of the huge trees.
This one?
No, number ten is a, it's a prune call.
I don't have the, I don't have the measurement on the tree number ten, I don't know what the diameter is. Um, I'm thinking it's not a huge one, only because I don't, didn't see it, I mean, we were driving and I didn't pop out, and we were rushing at the end.
I've got it marked as very large ash.
I don't think it's actually at seventy-four.
Seventy-four.
Three, isn't it?
Well, I think it's further, I think it's down by seventy-six.
I think it's somewhere between thirty, thirty-six inches. It is, it's somewhere between thirty, thirty-six inches, it's a big ash.
We just took a ton of trees down to add any potential, any potential infection because of the risk. I have thoughts, I mean, I. Took a ton of tree down on your neighborhood because of Emerald Ash.
It's across the street from the wires?
It's across the street from the wires, so, because it's not even number.
It's for the dead limb.
Yes, trying to get. Straight through, somebody else's tree.
But pruning is only for a six-inch limb, why is that, why is it that this wasn't on your prune, pruning?
We can accommodate the wires by removing just the six-inch limb on that tree. Uh, part of it is to remove it, one to save, you know, financially save the town, but two, because we know we're gonna have to remove the tree at some point, because it has the ability to fall into our wires, um, at that point in the future.
Tree town has the ability to fall into your wires.
I, I guess I am looking at, trying to identify the. The Emerald Ash for our situation. Because I know.
Would help, I want to get the tree deeper.
All right, how about a motion? To prune only unless, unless upon reevaluation in the next week.
Tree warden.
Active Emerald Ash for our disease is identified by the tree warden, that tree warden.
That's gonna work for you?
I'm sorry?
Does that work for you?
Sure.
I mean, if the tree is across the street from the wires, you know, it's probably not like to prevent this from doing what we need to do immediately.
Right.
This is just a situation we're saying. Now's our opportunity to take it down.
I, I think we're trying to, we're trying to create a situation where it'll be prune only, but if the tree warden finds. The active Emerald Ash, then it could be a removal situation. That's the motion that's being contemplated. That was proposed, I don't think it was made.
For what?
Nobody, nobody made.
So moved.
Moved and seconded for pruning only unless it's, there's been verified that there is Emerald Ash or disease, and then it will be. By the tree warden for removal. Moved and seconded.
I will. You moved for the second?
Oh, okay, sorry.
When you said unseconded, that you got me.
Unseconded, sorry. All right, all those in favor?
I'm sorry.
Okay, so are we now, we're now down to number twelve, I mean, eleven? And I don't have a picture of number eleven.
That, that was long by sizes.
I, I'm wondering if we can just, like, identify, are there trees here which are, like. You know. On hospice, and should they, you know, all right. There's some trees here where EverSource has noted decay, but the tree warden says they're okay, I mean, does it mean they're like, they're okay this year, but, you know, they're definitely got a, you know. They're a danger to us, I mean, I, I kind of, um. You know, I don't wanna. Anything that's just like a healthy tree, we should just say prune, but if there's a tree which is, you know. Currently doing okay, but it's definitely got a problem, and it's gonna be a problem in the future, I'm okay with kind of removing those, and I'm wondering if we can. Is there some sorting of these into those two different categories we can do?
I mean, we're trying to even getting a little complicated, and I'm, I am inclined to now just keep going straight through the list, because jumping around, keeping everything straight, I don't have an ability to freshly recreate the list, and I'm afraid we're gonna miss one.
What, what if I, what if you want to start a different, just close this and change, say, no. If we look at the neck, the smallest ones, if they're, you know, like, um.
Eleven, twelve.
Exactly. Eleven, twelve, twenty.
Twenty's already voted.
Yeah.
Those wonderful ones.
All right.
So what are you proposing for the small ones, Frank? Allow them to be removed wholesale?
This, this small, you know. Can we look at them as a group?
Eleven, twelve, I think.
It's like eleven, twelve, thirteen, sixteen.
I think you have to look at each one as a unique condition and.
And thirty.
That's it, we're taking so much time from the sideboard, just looking at the list.
I know, I think we need to just go through, item by item, because we, uh, we don't have eleven, but we have other, we have, the other, we have pictures, going after. Everything from eleven on, from twelve on, we have pictures of, so I think it's easier to just go one by one. All right, so eleven, we don't have a picture of it. It's apparently a red maple with decay, according to EverSource. And tree warden's saying it's strong and healthy. It's a twenty to.
Six to twelve.
Twelve, eighteen-inch diameter.
We have a six, six to twelve.
Six to twelve?
Third, third column.
Okay, sorry, six to twelve inch diameter, yes. Um, not having a picture of it, and I guess since we're trying to find some middle ground. We're recommending removal.
That is small.
Small.
There was a lot of trees in there, Eric.
All right, not having a picture and not having, I mean, we've kind of reviewed, but, um, again, it was one that. Not one that I, that stood out as this is a picturesque tree on our scenic road, providing a ton of shade, it is small. All right, so motion to approve removal of tree number eleven. Seconded, and, okay, motion moved, seconded, okay, moved and seconded, all those in favor of removal for tree eleven?
Any votes?
No.
Okay, okay.
The problem with that's six rows.
Twelve is another red oak, the same. I think it's, this one. It's, there's a ribbon there. And it's going up.
Situation.
I mean, twelve seems healthy from what I can see, the tree warden has identified it as healthy as well. Uh, nine-inch, um, red oak. I'm inclined, and I don't really see any for pruning, but. I could.
I mean, you can't tell, it could, it could be quite a bit of.
Yeah, you could say prune is necessary.
Yeah.
Prune is necessary, okay, so tree number twelve, motion to. Allow for pruning as necessary.
So. So.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor for.
All right.
Thirteen, it looks like the same kind of case.
Then thirteen. Another is a maple. One here. So it's. This is thirteen.
I mean, the trunk looks a fair distance from those wires, from the heart-to-heart scale.
Uh, the base of it is a challenging base on the hillside there, the erosion.
Or decay at the base of the tree, which is why it's on the list, and also because of that hillside, it's more likely to fall towards the wires.
Also. Also preventing erosion right now.
Yeah, no one's gonna follow this.
If you're looking at the split tree, that's, you're looking at the wrong one, through the center, it's one, uh, it's fourteen.
It's what, what's that?
The split tree that you're pointing to is number fourteen.
It's fourteen, okay. Maybe, oh, right, the codon red oak, so that's an oak, and this is, it was a maple, so where is?
Still left at that tree.
Maybe my picture's cut. Is it, oh, is it immediately to the left? No, we can't see maybe.
I think it's on the outside of the driveway, isn't it?
Yes.
I'm sorry, are you saying thirteen is not the tree that's in the foreground of the?
No, it's not, this is not thirteen, this is apparently fourteen, because it's, it's split, it's the one that's a twenty-six inch codon red, so thirteen is a twelve-inch declining maple. Closer up to the car, probably. They accurately get fourteen, and they mix those two up, they mix those two up. This could be thirteen. It's in the maple leaf, yeah. This look like thirteen. At the, I think I have thirteen and fourteen, perhaps. I think this is the, this is thirteen. This is our maple that's declining, according to the EverSource algorithm. And I believe this is, this makes more sense, this is the oak that's between number fourteen. Um. So in our numbering, this is our maple, that makes more sense, at least there's a maple leaf. Um, we're talking, oh, wait. Yes, I'm sorry, we're on number thirteen, a twelve-inch declining maple. And it's a small enough tree that, my inclination is prune it, see if you have any luck, if that falls over, it's not a big heavy tree. If it fails from whatever, you know, prune is necessary for the wire, anyone else?
All right, I would agree with you.
You okay with that, or do something else? What did anyone else have thought? I think I have the picture flipped between thirteen and fourteen, but this is thirteen.
So prune thirteen.
Prune thirteen is. Motion to approve, approve pruning as needed of tree number thirteen.
Sure.
Second, sure, second.
Seconded, all right, all those in favor of pruning as needed for tree thirteen?
All right.
Anyway, when you say motion, it's not clear whether you're making a motion or you're asking for a motion, so just be specific about what you're doing.
Okay, so sure, it sounds like my.
But if you make a motion, you don't have to say, so, so I just, I, I just wanted to understand whether you're making a motion or not.
Okay.
Or whether you're asking somebody else to make it.
All right, I'll be marked there, I'm making a motion there. I just pointed it here. All right, so fourteen, I think I, as I said, I had the picture backwards, fourteen is this larger tree here that's split. The codon, that it, it's up and over. Um, it's a twenty-six inch. I think. Because of the location and. I don't know, thoughts?
If there was a comment made, then we'd, we'd, we'd seen that, we'd given some of that. In the, you know, or.
In the mirror or.
What was the comment, the comment was that it's a codon that's got two splits?
Well, yeah, but also that is tree in decay.
This one was fourteen in the dec- decay, thirteen.
Yeah, zoom in, you showed it earlier when you zoomed in.
On the base?
And it's split.
Wait, just write about this split.
And at the base.
Hard, hard to see at the base, but.
But.
Uh, the motion.
Correct.
Motion to, uh.
I'll second it.
Alright, moved and seconded for removal of tree number fourteen, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah. Fifteen. Do we have any sense of what that distance is between the wires and the tree, because it kind of looks like it's touching, but. The picture. Yeah, but I've googled.
This hickory here.
Appear to be much of an issue from the photo.
But, but I'm just wondering if it's like pure proximity to the wires, which you can't really tell from the photo, right, like how far away? Do you guys remember on this one?
Well, we anticipate that it's gonna be way, wires.
But the wires are in the same alignment as the current wires.
They're, they're also five feet taller and higher voltage, so the proximity of the tree, and as it grows, the growth of the tree will get larger, it's going to increasingly become an issue over time.
It's just hard to tell from the picture, like, they look like they could be an inch apart from each other, or maybe with the perspective, they're ten feet from each other, it's really hard to just see, I just remember.
I was on, when I was identifying trees, you know, the trees that I was going after were trees that would be, you know, within the ten foot cleared zone, so, uh, you know, with the exception of some of the trees that were across the street, or that were, you know, pruning, uh, of those things that, you know, were beyond our easy, uh, specifications, uh, you know, I was identifying trees within our tree zone.
I think the wires are actually almost hitting it.
Yeah.
Looks like the horizon wires up against it on the Google.
Kind of what I'm asking is if it's like.
The other thing I noticed about the one I looked at there, I noticed that those ivy growing up there was leaning as well.
This one?
I, I don't know why it's central in that picture, that's what I saw, it's the most I look for. He had those in his home.
Yeah, I mean, neither of those trees look like they're a candidate for pruning, it's either remove them or, you know.
Yeah, that's right.
It's just, it's the main trouble, it's right, it's starting near the wires.
But, but what I'm hearing from ever source is that it's anywhere in the ten foot zone, and, and it's really unclear from the picture. Where in that ten foot zone it is, right?
I think you're in the ten inch zone.
Ten.
I honestly think the, the primary that's there might be almost up against it, the horizon and Comcast wires look like they're rubbing it.
Okay, move, move to removal of that tree.
Look, there was, the edge at the bottom of it, one of them. There's a lot of holes in it as well.
Okay, I'm, I'm good to just make a motion, I'm, I'm moved to remember fifteen.
Second.
Second.
Alright, moved and seconded. Alright, um.
Take a vote.
This one hurts.
Yeah, you gotta vote.
We gotta vote, okay?
Oh, you're saying this one hurts you?
Alright, alright.
Yeah. Um, I don't know, I, I feel like this is a really nice tall, healthy tree, but I, I guess if that, the wires are rubbing against it and. There's no guard that can.
I mean, the, the sleeve or guard, wire guards would be placed against the primary conductors, you know, to keep them in the tree, it's, uh. You know, with service, some sort of, it's really protect the wire, to be honest, it's not really there to protect people or protect, it, it, it's not really supposed to treat as if it's, you know. A safety device, it's more to prevent abrasion of the wire itself.
The pit can be installed.
What was that, Brian, I'm sorry?
The, the, the sledge can be installed.
The sleeves can be installed, correct, if there's an existing situation that we can't.
Are the sleeves yellow?
Orange, yellow, the older was orange.
The older was yellow.
It's all covered in that front yard.
You have a motion a second, so I'm either gonna act on that, okay, revote removal.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's, it's a nice tree that should be saved, it is close to the lines, um, if there's a way to. Sleeves can mitigate that, that would be my preference, but it, it, it's not gonna work.
So I have your motion and second for removal, we should take a vote, and then we can reassess if we need a new, a new motion. So, all in favor of removal?
Alright, aye.
That was fifteen?
Yeah.
Uh, that was, yes, fifteen. Alright, moving on, sixteen, another hickory tree. Is sixteen?
Sixteen is leaning out over the wires.
Yeah, I'm more inclined to remember sixteen than fifteen, but.
It's just, uh. Move for removal.
So, they're second to French.
Now, second.
Did you have other motions for removal?
Yeah, a second.
Second, so all those in favor?
Aye.
This one, right behind the twenty-five. Be inaccurate.
That, that's.
That's a prune.
Hard to see from that second.
For number seventeen?
Yeah.
And it's, and it's pretty large, uh, so it could take the.
Alright, so I'll make a motion, you make a motion? Second.
Can I show you the other side of the tree?
Those are the other.
That's the opposite side of the tree, it's already taken a wire down. Just losing. But that's the opposite view.
This, this one?
Ten and a couple of break offs, and then you can tell it's all potato.
This is the one, it looks to be, it came.
It's almost have lost.
Those have been pruned.
We got all ones, one, two, three, four. Five, what, it's very.
What are you saying, trying to avoid?
What's that?
It's avoid taking fire.
Well, force can work, so.
I would draw a motion.
Draw your motion. There are new motions for removal on tree seventeen.
Okay, I'll move that.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor of removal of tree seventeen?
Aye.
Light about this. Knowledge of the decline in it.
My notes that eighteen looks bad.
Eighteen is a twenty inch oak.
It does look like a big chunk of decay at the base, doesn't it?
Yeah.
The next photo will show it.
John, do you have any other Google pics on this one, or any comment?
On eighteen?
Yeah.
Some left apart, it's really red.
Isn't this one eighteen too red?
My notes said that it looked bad, it's some decay at the base.
If you zoom in, are you made to the, couldn't get the base to.
Yeah.
It might be, well.
But. At least, I mean, I've got trees that have, that have that, the base, and I've lived a long time still.
That uncommon.
Yeah.
I think it took kind of fall in case Sarah O'Connell's wires. The first go through the woods there.
It doesn't actually look like it needs pruning, but.
Several dead branches on it. Some growth on it.
Oh, I guess there are some branches sticking out towards the wires.
See this?
This is the decay?
You don't think so?
No.
The decay is a progressive disease, it's not gonna get better on the tree, true a lot over it.
Doesn't get better, but it could last another hundred years.
Yeah, we're just looking at the, at the, like, the multiple dead branches, and maybe I just can't see the picture very well, Brian, so maybe you can help, but when I look at the. This one, or? No, the picture where it's.
Because if you look at that, if you look at the left branch coming out, that left fork, and you go up, there's. The branch sticking out from that, there's nothing on it, you can go up the other branch, that fork's out in there, there's nothing on it.
No, there's, are there, are there like many multiple dead branches on this, it's just, it's just hard to tell from. The pictures.
These pictures aren't doing any of the trees justice. I, I, I think if you pruned it away from the wires, that would be.
My inclination is, is a large, fairly large oak tree. My inclination is to recommend pruning. But I don't know if anyone else feels that way.
I, I feel that way.
Yeah, I mean, it, it doesn't look like the wires, like, the existing location of the wires, if those just moved out, it doesn't look like even pruning would be needed, but.
Pruning as needed, it needed. The motion to. For tree number eighteen. Prune as needed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is only.
Me opposed. Thanks, I approve you.
If we're wrong, what is your vote?
I didn't vote, I couldn't figure out, yeah, sure, it's passed, it's three one, right?
Yeah.
The next one is number twenty-one. The next one is not voted, and I'm very confused by these pictures, I can't tell what's going on with this tree.
Did I, somebody?
No, 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 I just can't tell what, what is the tree in question? Is it just really short?
I think it's a tall.
It's a really tall one.
Oh, it's the pine?
It's the pine, so it's a tall pine.
Twenty inch, no, no, it's twenty.
I just, you just can't see.
This is a, underneath it is the, um. Let's see, with numbers, with numbers again, it's twenty-one.
Yeah, we're still.
Yeah, thank you.
It seems like there's, the, the pine doesn't seem to be the problem in this.
It's that one that's hanging out of the roof.
So.
The base of the tree is, like, you could almost hit it with a car.
At, at one oh five, there were four trees listed. And twenty-three was a white pine as well.
We voted prune on that one.
But there's a smaller tree.
Twenty-one, is that correct? Yep.
That was the one.
Alright, so that is, I'm sorry, just 'cause I, I took the picture of the tag, and then I took a picture of the tree, and when I imported, everything was flipped, so then when I put it into, I tried to sort it back, and I was looking at my original picture to make sure that this is the tree, this is tree twenty-one here.
I mean, this looks like it violates the ten foot radius, but it seems far enough from the conductors.
Twenty-two and twenty-three, I'm gonna say that, that is we voted to prune.
Now, twenty-two, we've voted removal, I have.
Twenty-two is removal, so dead.
Yeah, twenty-two is dead.
But twenty-one and twenty-three are both white pines.
I just, it's just, I just can't see how close it is to the wires, I mean, I just, I do want to take high voltage seriously, but.
I mean, are there, there's white pines, they have this way, or a lot of other species.
They, uh. They also snap violently and take lots of stuff down, most of our memorable damage in the past couple of years is the. White pines, very large white pines.
I mean, that's why I, hickory.
Something to be considered, ten feet, or eight, sixty feet, gonna do the same damage.
The trunk of the tree was within sixty feet of the wires.
Two feet tomorrow.
I'm curious, twenty.
When we had our previous discussion, twenty-one, or twenty-three was lifted, identified by you for removal, I mean, for pruning, but. Twenty-three looks like it's closer to the wires than twenty-one, now, maybe you had it pictured. Twenty-one.
Well, the wires across the road there, it's really hard to tell.
Twenty-three has been already approved for pruning.
But again, we're, we're, you know, trying, anticipating the path of the future construction, not necessarily the current location of wires.
We need to compromise here. They give mine.
Well, I'll take Sean's comment pretty seriously. I mean, twenty one looks like it's in a lot more danger of bending and snapping twenty three. Twenty three is like stuck here and sturdier and farther from the wires, so. I can, I can, I can, in my own head, imagine we'd have different decisions between these trees.
We agree twenty one's the one real close to the road?
No, twenty three.
What?
Twenty three is the one on the corner.
Twenty three was identified earlier.
Twenty three is super close to the road. Twenty three is very close to the road.
See that right there, Sean?
That's twenty.
That one.
That's twenty three.
Okay.
That's twenty three, and that was on EverSource's list as we can live with just a pruning.
There's not much to prune. It's all up, the canopy's up. Way above where the wires will be.
Right, but it was the same as twenty one. It's just a distance issue, I think, right? So.
Yeah, we're trying to compromise here. It's the tree that I find is a lot of root, you know. How are you that? Talking about, you know, twenty three, talking about twenty one. To your point, that is a.
Yeah, we already, I guess, agreed on, I don't know what that challenge, but consent agreement, but we agreed to pruning on twenty three, so. That's the one right up on the edge of the road, but twenty one is the one that we're up for discussion. Are we? Are we leaning towards a motion to, I guess I'll make a motion for a removal of tree twenty one?
Second.
Move in second is for removal of tree twenty one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Twenty two is already dead. Twenty four. One leaning up over. And it's in decline, but that is one that. Are scenic and providing shade on the road and it's an oak, I don't know. Our tree warden feels that it's not in decline.
These pictures were taken yesterday?
Today.
Today. That's leaked out pretty good for a tree to climb.
Can't tell how close it is to the wire. That's, that's what. I mean, it, the wires have been fine now, but we're being told that this is. A different scenario out, but I'm inclined to keep this tree. Anyone else have thought on it?
Uh, we don't know how close it is to the wire. I mean, it's definitely a tree that you do want to take down before it falls because it's definitely falling in the direction of the wires. There's no question of that, but it does go.
Sean, do you see anything more in your Google map?
The pole's about. Two, three feet off the road and the tree might be five feet off the road. Can't be far from the wires.
And it's leaning toward.
I think the height's what's going to kill it too, because it's gonna, it's gonna push the wires right up into that canopy. It's hard to tell. That. That leader coming over the road is going to go, no matter what. You're only going to be left with the other. Half of the truck.
Shade on it.
But I, I don't think it'll ever be ten feet away from those wires.
I'm getting a certain change in the proportions of the tree once we remove that later.
Pretty close.
The same, but if.
That's absolutely, pretty close to the base of the tree. Tree is leaning towards the wires.
Yeah, if the post is two feet from the road and the tree is five feet from the road and the tree is leaning toward the post.
It must go right through where the crossroads.
Yeah, that's not really, I mean, given the voltage of the wires that's coming in, it just seems not. Like it's not a good situation.
All right, so tree number twenty four, motion for removal?
Moved.
Second.
I still don't make a clear motion. I'm making a motion for removal of twenty four.
Yes.
All right, all is in favor of removal of twenty four?
Aye.
All right.
So around thirty and that one was, could not identify, is that?
Thirty is a private tree. It's behind a stone wall. So now we're on.
Thirty four?
Thirty four.
Thirty three was denied.
Yes, it's private. We have no.
No, thirty was private.
Thirty three was the catch shot for.
Yeah, thirty is private, I'm sorry. And then which one?
Thirty three was grouped with twenty six, twenty seven, and twenty eight for consults.
Are you agreeing around thirty four?
Thirty four is. Maybe, I feel like thirty four maybe should be. Am I looking at the right tree for thirty four?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, like it should be grouped potentially for consult. With thirty three.
They prune it, which is going to be that one leader.
Yes, that one leader over the roadway.
Oh, you, you know now, or you, you know.
Sean had asked the question, if we pruned it, what will we do? And we were removed that, that one fifteen inch leader going over the roadway.
Okay.
I'm inclined to approve pruning.
Yeah.
Second.
Thirty four, okay. All in favor of approving the removal of the limb going over the pruning, sorry.
Aye.
All right. Prune, so pruning for thirty four.
No, the last one was thirty six.
Thirty six.
It's just like really close to the line.
Yeah, it looks like the base is very close to the edge of the road.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of recent things.
Second. I'm sorry. In the first picture, you can see it's.
Right, this one here's that.
Yeah, the perspective is just.
It is, yeah, it's.
Be ashamed to remove that.
Yeah, it's really.
I'm.
Looks like it leans its way to attract stuff.
I, I, I couldn't.
I mean, you might have seen it five feet there.
Did you make a recommendation? No, I said, I, 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 I couldn't support.
It just looks to me like the base is eighteen inches off the road. And the poles are at, at the road interface.
It's a little more, it's a little more than eighteen inches.
Yeah.
Okay.
It looks like the tree is leaning away from the conductor, as I said.
Yeah, it's very close at the base. It might be leaning away a bit and.
No, I'm convinced.
Exactly. My inclination is to keep it. Even.
Yeah. I, I'd make a motion for.
Removal?
No, prune only.
Prune only, okay, sorry. All right, all right, motion to prune as needed on tree number thirty six. Uh, yeah, Jim made the motion. I'll second Jim's motion, Jim's motion for pruning only for thirty six. All those in favor?
Aye. All right.
All right, so. We made a decision on all trees that seem right. If there's anything.
Oh, one, two, and three, you review what the decision was on those three trees.
One was.
One was a removal.
Two and three were pruning.
Two and three are prune only.
There's thirty seven coming down?
Thirty seven?
Yeah.
Yes.
You just voted on thirty six, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, thirty seven.
Thirty seven before?
Thirty seven is agreed for removal. That was kind of part of the context agenda, the six tree that we agreed right off the bat, fine, remove.
So four. Eleven is pruned. Six is pruned. Seven, eight is pruned.
Eight.
Nine has pruned.
Ten has a special condition.
Right. Eleven. Eleven is removed.
Yep.
Twelve is pruned. Thirteen is pruned. Fourteen is pruned.
Fifteen removal.
Let's let Heidi make sure.
Fifteen.
Seventeen is pruned. Eighteen is pruned. Nineteen is pruned.
I don't have.
There was a consent one?
Yeah, there was consent, okay. Uh, twenty is removed.
My tree is consented.
That was pruned. Twenty four is removed. Twenty five consent pruned. Twenty six is.
Consent.
In fact, it's special.
Is the, is the.
Special review. Twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight, and thirty three are special consult review.
Right, but they're, they're pruned.
They're pruning.
Twenty nine was removed. Thirty, don't touch, thirty one is removed. Thirty two is.
Yeah, pruned.
Thirty three is a consult, thirty four is pruned. Thirty five is removed. Thirty six is pruned. And thirty seven is removed.
Yeah.
I have thirty five is removed. That's right?
Yes.
Yes, correct. All righty. So.
Last thing you guys do any work in Sherburne?
Unfortunately, no.
I suppose you've got all the people who, none, none of us must be friends.
No, it's, believe me, it's, it's, it's not an easy decision to make. But these number trees, I'm actually. Very happy that we got this done one night because honestly, you know, a lot of times we will come to situations like this and it'll have to be, you know, it just takes a while. We'll have to, you know. Continue with that at a later date, but we're, uh, chipping it a bit to try and get this worked on because they've already started moving wires and, you know. We're getting pressure from coworkers to get the tree work completed.
I think we have to wait for appeal to process and we have to get some time.
I mean, we had to give it from the hearing date. I'd have to double check.
Yeah, we'll just.
We'll confirm on, by tomorrow, we'll have an answer to you on whether work can begin or whether there's an appeal process time. I'm watching that ring the bell that there is time to it.
Is that what the law, what will bylaw? Because I'm not familiar with anything like that.
Excuse me, sir.
Can we get back to you on, on the process? I don't think we'll answer that tonight.
Yeah, I just don't accept people from the appeals select board. Challenge decision. I just want to know what that timing is.
And we'll, tomorrow we'll look at the bylaw, we'll look at the language and make sure, see what the language says, see what the answer, we'll have an answer one way or another, whether there is an appeal time period that we need to abide by. Or if there's not, but. I need, we need to research it and make sure we're correct or not correct.
Okay.
So motion to close the, of the tree hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Tree hearing has officially been. Done. Earlier tonight, someone after me thought it would go past nine o'clock. No way! Anyway, here we are. Thank you, everyone.
I appreciate the help. What did this? It's not easy.
All right, as far as, I think we'll, planning board, we, uh. The only item on the agenda that I didn't get to on there was just that we are having this workshop on June twenty fifth. At six thirty PM here at Town Hall for, uh, an opportunity for residents for everyone to look at. Where zoning for three A makes sense. We are required to zone for allowing, allowing at least a minimum of seventy eight units. By right of voting family. So again, it's a zoning work, it's not building, so. It'll be a good opportunity to allow for some good discussion. Hopefully, we can encourage people to come out and make it kind of fun. It's a nice, planning board social event of the year, so.
Over the, beverages and.
We can't have anything alcoholic, but we will have some kind of snacks to tide everybody over at the dinner hour, so.
Are there still regular planning meetings on the fourth and the eighteenth?
I was just going to ask with the next meeting, there was actually something that came through today that was really good meeting.
Oh, it was.
That was on the fourth.
It was the, um, it was the general chemical.
Yes.
Groundwater thing, but I don't, I mean, it, it's, yeah, I. Like, there's a lot of overlap with groundwater. I don't think a lot of overlap with planning board. Let me just look at it.
I, it was something that I felt like might actually be worthwhile.
Okay, let's see. It is. Mass DEP is hosting an in-person public meeting regarding the former General Chemical site. Which is on the border of Framingham. Is inviting individuals on the public involvement mailing list as well as local officials from Framingham, Sherburne, and Natick to attend. To update the community and interested party. Nope, that's all, all it says is provide updates on the cleanup work at General Chemicals. Discuss planned demolition of a warehouse building. And answer questions posed by attendees. Seven to nine on June fourth. It is, I think it is of general interest to the town. But.
I know, it's just two events on the same, our same meeting night.
I guess, what if, I mean, we, we've got the, because of the, we've got the meeting. The workshop is the twenty fifth. I guess if in June, if we did the eleventh and the twenty fifth, so that we're not doing back-to-back weeks. That. Possibility for people. It's, you know, normally we meet on the first and third, third, two things of the month, so. I guess for June. The second and fourth, of course, I don't know where that, we should be like, tonight we're in conflict with ZBA. I don't know where we are with ZBA.
They don't always.
They don't plan that.
Yeah, sometimes they skip a week. It's not necessarily.
No. We can't, if we scheduled for us to be the eleventh and the twenty fifth, it's not like we knowingly are scheduling. During another. I mean, I don't know how much we'll have on the agenda for the eleventh. I feel like it's just a good place to, for us to check in prior to. The workshop on the twenty fifth. I don't know if on the eleventh, would you want to even, you wanted to make a Zoom meeting? And do, just, because we're thinking it's just kind of a check-in meeting, make the eleventh a Zoom. We, the twenty fifth, we all need to be here in person.
I'm out of town. How do you know this? But I'm traveling, so I'm not available on twenty.
You're not available, that happens.
You both are fine for me.
We're fine. Ross, what's your?
Yeah, I'm, I'm available both those days.
I, I would also suggest that in lieu of an empty agenda and just a check-in, like we could probably make work on prioritizing some of the things or, you know, there's some back burner items that. Come to the front if we're.
Yeah, I mean, I think we could, we could bring forth what we need to start, but we're going to have a lot of work to do with the three A too, so. And we want to introduce. I mean, we can do some, some, you know, identification of work, but I didn't want to introduce something that would be a. I don't know what we have those contentious of the three A, but.
No, Frank was working on some of the battery entry stories.
Battery entry stories.
Something seen that he might be able to present on the eleventh at that time.
Did someone get Will's?
Not yet.
By law, okay. Rules and rights, okay. By law, okay, rules and rights, okay.
I would, um I would say, you know, there's a couple of things that'll be I don't know if I'd use the word contentious, but possibly contentious, certainly interesting about the three A, one of them is that I think, you know, the the board basically put together something that I think is a very good faith attempt to comply with the spirit of the state law, including a section out in the general direction of the commuter rail station and another section in the center of town, and there's people, and we've seen quite a few people actually interested in having their properties in the overlay district. But I think there's also a going to be a significant faction in town that thinks it's like, oh, we shouldn't we shouldn't approve a district any larger than the minimum the state requiring us to do, so seventy eight units exactly at whatever the density, you know, just, just something that's big enough, but there will be, there will be some people objecting to make it bigger than that, but of course, the other thing that's gonna be is the whole thing is just the regulations are complicated, the office has does a lot of interpretation of them, which we're not aware of what's gonna happen, so.
It could change by the time we submit it, right?
Yeah.
But wasn't there a state, wasn't there a state of intent to just go with the minimum size?
Did someone know if I would say that?
No, I think quite the opposite, the board proposed something that really does.
I I agree that there was a proposal that was bigger than the requirement, but I thought more recently when when revisiting the the idea of a workshop, I felt like somebody was advocating for sticking with the bare minimum.
I think, I guess I would hesitate to limit ourselves to a goal, a set goal, I think that narrow ahead of the workshop. I think the workshop, we would want to enter with an open mind and kind of looking at the entire town, the opportunity for everybody to really think, okay, the entire town, without us coming forth with kind of our notions of what we've already worked on, I guess, to to a certain degree. Kind of encouraging our fellow residents to look at the town as a whole and think about this, then when a decision is made, maybe there's, you know, better than them feeling like, oh, we just told you this, and why are they bothering to show up, so.
One concern I have is if we choose and only do seventy eight units, that those seventy eight units may get moved out, some might get, um, dismissed by the E O H L C because
Too close.
No, I'm not advocating for it. No, I don't, I don't think we should do huge tracts.
I thought I heard that there was an intent to make it smaller than was proposed last time, but maybe I just.
Yes.
I don't remember anybody on board saying that, I remember some feedback from the public, so.
No, I I do think we should try not make.
Yeah.
And I think we should try to get as close, but I think we have to realize that last time they they took out a lot of the land, or decided what things was here, so what we were looking at acreage wise, thinking it wouldn't produce as much. May not, so we want to make sure we don't go overboard, but we want to comply with the law.
Yeah, yeah, there's also, I was just reading an article, I I can send it to you if I find it again, but um it does look like some towns are, you know, effectively trying to game the system by
acre zoning.
Having very specific, very limited zones and like zoning them where it's all like, you know, there's already somewhat less dense, but relatively new and relatively dense housing there, so like, nobody's ever gonna like tear down the density of ten units per acre in order to build fifteen, if the ten are in good shape, I mean, that's just economically insane, so, um I can certainly imagine that the state office is going to start, you know, kind of trying to crack down on that, anything they see as an attempt to do that. I I would be unsurprised to see them doing that, so.
It's not a good thing for someone's.
Anyway, this fair to the um, the law is to create open up zoning that doesn't exist, right?
Yeah.
Open and public.
Yeah. But remove that barrier that currently exists and you know, each town's different, it's not a one size fits all, you know.
I I think the eleventh meeting would be good to just also concentrate on what questions we want to ask the consultants, and say, this is what we might consult from there, be able to discuss.
I think that's one of the main point issues, because I feel so the the last educational outreach was created more confusion than it did, uh, answering, providing clarity and a real understanding of what it is that this is supposed to be, and as a result of that, I think there are a lot of people that are against it, that might have been bored, it might be some of the word that are for it, it might be against it, but uh, that, I mean, I I think there's a fair amount of confusion, so I think it's not just sitting down and looking at a map and doing that as well as giving, you know, that are those in our.
Uh, how does, I guess, first question, how does everyone feel about making the eleventh a Zoom? Only that, and maybe a chance to look at the language, um, and thinking about, you know, thinking about what we're planning to what's coming forth at the workshop, um, maybe sharing information on what we've learned thus far. Of how you calculate, maybe what our mistakes were, and some of that will come out at the workshop, I know, but I don't want it to be, um, you know, we want people to have a chance to have a dialogue, um.
Who's working with the consultant and who's advertising the session and how like, how is, like I've 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 heard about the session coming and the consultant's contract, but I'm just not sure like how the process is.
Right, I don't know what the carrot is for people to attend other than that they've been hearing about three A and there are opportunity to have a voice.
No, but I mean, who's who's actually been, Heidi, I'm assuming.
I was gonna say, I have spoken with the consultant, um, and I have posted up several signs right now, out at this poster at the front of the hall, this poster downstairs in Town Hall. Um, it's on the website that we're having a hearing.
But last time we had like a mailing that went out to the butters of the zones, the proposed zones.
Right.
It would seem like it would make sense to.
We don't want to do a townwide hearing, because we're asking, we don't have specifics, we don't have to say it's this time, it's like.
I just think if we just put it on the website.
Should we do a town, we maybe we should do a townwide hearing.
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
We could, I mean, I guess, this is our one shot to get, this is kind of this is the the one opportunity, we've hired a consultant to help facilitate this community engagement, this is exactly, so it doesn't make any sense if it's not, we don't have some participation, I mean, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Right, and and I think it's a tough week because it's summer, but we don't have much choice, no, so then my next question is who's working with the consultant and helping to guide the content development, so we don't have like a misfire like last time.
I think we've got some better communication in place among all of us, and there were some, when we reevaluated what happened, there was some, I think, the combination of, you know, being um, not attending our meetings as much because he was on the uh, retiring basically, and then, um.
So, but I I guess my, let me rephrase my question, is someone providing the consultant with direction about what it is that we want to get?
I have spoken with him.
We want, we want them to present.
Right, when I've asked him, as I said, I'd like him to do an overview of three A. Talking about what it is and what is Sherburne's commitment, like, what would Sherburne, what would it look like for Sherburne to be consistent with three A? And then I want him to go into mappings and look at parcels and actually show density and size of parcels and have people have an interaction where they'd come up and say, listening to what his presentation was, where could they put their little stickies up on a map to say where would they think that we could meet the three A obligation?
But the whole what what is three A is what was kind of bumbled up last time, right?
Right.
And what are the benefits and the problems of three A?
I I think affordable housing in general is abstract to a lot of people, and like I was saying before, there's different buckets that should be defined, meaning that forty B is one, one bucket, you have the affordable housing by by law, but.
It's reasonable. Three A is not affordable, though.
Three A is not affordable.
In fact, it's it's like prohibited from being.
That's why, that's why.
But it it's housing.
It's it's housing.
So we can. Uh, we in our, I mean, in in the bylaw that we wrote and and probably in the direction that we would probably continue would be to as we edit it, make the corrections, I think we would continue to keep the ten percent that the state does allow, the requirement of ten percent affordable.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's not that wholly affordable, but it's every bit as affordable as our inclusionary zoning by law allows.
I agree.
How about people sending ideas of what they really would like to see this time and what, like, what they felt was not good on the last times and what they would like to see in this, so that, um, that we can pass it on to consultants? Get in a better direction.
Obviously, that's a little bit challenging, because it's been so long since we saw that presentation from the previous one. But if we kind of have a sense of what the presentation was going to be, we can look at and say, oh, maybe you could add this, maybe, oh, how are you gonna, how are you gonna work on it?
This is not so much a presentation, this is a workshop, so this is like when we did the housing production plan, we had a workshop early in this stage.
But, but we have.
And there were other sessions that were here presenting language and here's where we are, but this is a workshop to look, expand around ideas, this is a
But we have to explain what it is, right? It's such a confusing law.
You know, facing that.
But there has to be an upfront presentation for people to take.
Go, 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 go. Explain three A, um.
But that's the part that's confusing, because it's so complicated, that the way you explain it can muddle muddle people up and it can.
And and it can either vote for something or not wanted and versus wanting it.
Not understand it, and there's just so many layers of three A that I think.
Um, I ask if he can send me his samples or his PowerPoint or his presentation or his points, and then the eleven to be able to share that.
Yeah, that would be really helpful, I think. Really, I envision it like the last one.
Either, either possibly, the other, the other possible option would be is if there is already some YouTube videos of of presentations that maybe could be sent out to people ahead of this.
I mean, these these, these people, like, this this firm does three A outreach, right?
Right, yeah.
So they they should have some materials that they've used in the past that are readily available.
Yeah. Well, last, we were just trying to tailor, again, we were trying to make this, there does need to be an introduction, but I was trying not to make this a Q and A session like the last one, I was trying to make this in mapping, let's say, you know, if we need to move this density, what does density look like here? Where where, if you put it on this parcel, what happens?
Yeah, I'm not sure we have to go into every detail, just because first off, we should be only presenting, we basically say, you know, there's all these different classes of N B T A communities.
Right.
And all the other classes have more stringent requirements, we are in the
Smaller jaces.
neighboring community, neighboring small community class, and this is what applies to us, so that helps some. And then the the thing that's really complicated is figuring out, well, exactly what are you getting credit for with the zoning, but I mean, the the general outlines of what the law requires, I think, are not that difficult to explain.
No, I also think I want to be prepared to answer why some towns voted it down.
Yeah, for sure.
Because some have, but some of the reasons are not what people want. You know, it wasn't because they were against three A, a lot of, you know, Milton was because the planning board couldn't come up with the area, so select board chose the area, and that's what the town, the town did not want the areas that was chosen.
Did you ever get clarification on the cap, the fifteen units per acre and up?
Well, we had up to fifteen units per acre in ours.
That they that they said would not?
There was a gross density cap, there were two different counts, one is gross, one was like a net, and we can have we can say up to fifteen units per acre, but we can't put a cap of only allowing twenty. We can't say a max, we couldn't say a max, that we we couldn't say can't exceed.
But if I say up to fifteen, doesn't that imply that sixteen wouldn't be allowed?
Well, that's what I was saying, I thought that is a disconnect.
Wasn't there language that was rejected, that up to fifteen units?
It was the maximum of twenty.
Oh.
It still doesn't make sense to me.
Because, no, I think what they were saying is that up to fifteen per acre could still produce so many different units, I I I still don't understand why, they just said the cap, they calculated it differently, different ways of how they were doing this gross density.
Maybe, maybe if you can help the consultant personally.
I mean, you have the, I don't think we're gonna get a clear, you you had, they had a
The E O H L C.
That we had the head person there and that you ratted up two different people at both times, you kind of come back fuzzy math, you could, you let the consultant know that this is a fuzzy but I don't have, we're not closer to.
And the A G said you can't say the maximum of twenty, but they did not say that we couldn't say up to fifteen. So if the A G O is gonna accept that up to fifteen, but wants to get rid of the twenty, then to me, that implies that fifteen's kind of a cap a little bit.
It does, that makes no sense.
Right, so we're dealing with the A G O wanted something, the E O H L C thinks of something different. Uh, it's, I can't get an answer, I could not get a straight answer.
Here, the thing is, if my understanding of it, by looking at the examples in the law, would say that if we had a developer that came in and for whatever their own reasons are, they decided they wanted to develop something at a density of ten units per acre.
Yeah.
My understanding is that's valid.
Right.
So we don't have to put a minimum of fifteen in.
Correct.
We don't have to require a minimum of fifteen of the developer.
No.
But we cannot put a limit of under fifteen, we we have to allow up to fifteen.
Up to fifteen, right.
And, but the way it's phrased is a minimum gross density, it really, the way it looks to me is that like the the zoning would theoretically allow this area to be developed at fifteen units per acre over the whole area.
Right.
And whether or not developers choose to do that, we don't have to force them to do that.
I I think that is how I'm looking at it too, if they get a by right, which means they're not going to go through all of our permitting process, they get a greater density than uh, a regular single-family homes. But they can choose twelve, they can choose ten.
And if we say up to fifteen, it would seem like they can't choose twenty, then we can't cap it at twenty, it makes no freaking sense whatsoever.
But I just, I give different answers.
Good.
I'm just curious.
Alright, so, I, I'm definitely okay with it, so leaving on the eleventh, the twenty fifth, the eleventh will be fully removed. Twenty fifth is is here, right?
That's the workshop.
The workshop is here.
So we're not doing anything on the first.
So nothing on the first, and nothing on the fourth.
Which is the first Tuesday.
I mean, the first, Tuesday, the fourth, we're not.
Maybe the second and the fourth instead of the first.
Correct, so I'll get together a little postcard, so that on the eleventh for us to review, and then we can call it out next week, I don't, I don't want, I want to get it close enough to the hearing, so it doesn't just sit on people's desk. So try to figure something to allow town planner report quickly. Yeah, I met with the historical district and the historical commission yesterday. They had asked me to come and talk about three A, they had a lot of concerns, um, they had not found out about mapping the downtown area till one of them had received our notice of public hearing that we were holding, we had the Q session and seeing them at online. To see what the downtown areas were, so that was the first time. Perfect, which I'm not very happy with. Do you can imagine if they have some very serious objections to the downtown area and restored properties being used. Uh, I've asked them to make sure they come to this mapping session, to talk to us, because on the one hand, some neighbors wanted to be included because they see opportunities to get a different use, and what I heard from a lot of the neighbors is they wanted to be able to use like their lines from stores or some type of business, it's not necessarily they want to knock down their property and create apartment building, but that they want more capabilities to use their properties for some other uses. So I I'm also thinking that three A might not be the answer to solve this, this might not be the best way. Um. And we, the downtown area has a lot of, looked at that map of what they did not count in because of public water supplies, there's very few. Spots in the downtown that actually contributed to our 3A count. So I'd like to look at some other parcels in town as well, and one of the other things I've heard from neighbors is Coolidge Street, we're always putting everything that are in the town. And maybe we should look at another part of town, it doesn't have to be downtown, we're not like the N B T A. We did communities, well, because we're not hosting it, that they want us downtown, we don't have an acreage requirement. We have a whole more flexibility, we just need to show the zoning, so. One of the areas I was thinking, you know, the Kendall Lab, makes sense, it is the closest to it, it does have water. Yours seems to be favorable towards this, that they would want to look at something, it's a parcel that could be developed at some point anyway. Um, so I would like to keep that in, but I'd also like to look at another parcel of town, and the one with the sound field. Which is already built, have a density already, and the neighborhood is used to having a denser community right next to them.
Pretty so.
Uh.
Is it on the.
Sixteen, no, go down sixteen.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Townhouse and Center were built.
Yeah, Austin.
Right.
That you are allowed to sort of overlay over, I mean, it's like any zoning, you consider zoning overlay over something that's. We already think of it as being the fortyB, so we think it is the splitter because there is something was built there, but. Then that as we've learned, there are options to include, if you're putting a zoning overlay over, so.
Meaning if in.
Forty years.
Forty years, someone wants to knock down all those buildings, they can, and then it has a 3A capability. Which isn't much denser than what's there. So it's what you write in the globe, how a lot of places were choosing some areas that.
I mean, we got to be careful with, again, this is why I heard, you know. I hesitate for us to be picking spots just yet, we hired a consultant to come in and try to help us look at the entire town. But we'll do a townwide mailing and encourage as many people to come out because, you know, we end up at similar spots, but. It's useful for us to really kind of walk in with a warm and open mind and think of the whole town and have these conversations about. What makes sense and what doesn't, and what is they'll need.
We might find some deep restriction issue that they can't use Southfield, I don't know, but I just want to be able to look at some other parcels of town.
I think, I think we also just need to be careful about spot zoning and. And a stated intention to look at parcels, so just, you know, as we move forward and sort of continue these discussions. We shouldn't be looking at parcels, we should be looking at areas, right?
Yeah.
So I guess I would like to look at different areas of town and one side of town, the other side of town, balance.
The, the charrette's a good way to inform.
Yeah. And if you have.
Pinstagies up.
If anyone has other ideas, please pass them on.
I mean, I expect to kind of, yeah, I guess a charrette, as far as I go, people have some maps up and they'll be sticky notes with people that'll be able to kind of. Identify different areas, regions on a map, um, to try and make it interactive, try and make it visual, try and get some. Community engagement on the issues.
What, what, what precludes the town from designated, designating the areas around the Coolidge Street developments as. Three A zoning overlay, because fortyB would still be.
The existing three, the, the area that's already zoned. Under our EA is limited to four units per acre, because we've already added EA's.
Oh, it's got the age restriction.
Right.
And we've got the age restriction, so we can't.
So it would just be, okay.
Can't, yeah, it can't have age restriction.
That's right, I was trying to remember what it was, I knew there was something.
Right, and then you have the age restriction, not the four units per acre.
The one.
Um, the Coolidge. We were trying to find, I can't remember where, where that land is.
Yeah, the, the Coolidge. Again, has so many parcels already that. I mean, and, and, or so many units that's going to be, going to be created and it may create more.
But it's not, but that's not an approved project, so I'm just saying like if we need to, if there are areas of town where we feel like higher density would be acceptable. And we don't, we don't have a built project there, like, it would almost be like, well, if that project felt through and. And another fortyB didn't come along, this would be a backup.
And then we, we, we presented kind of the history and where we're at to the consultant, and he's coming in and he is planning to address. What, you know, what areas are off limits or what areas are, are within reason and then we can evaluate those, so I hesitate for us to tonight try to.
Yeah.
Yeah, but he's already been looking, he's been asking me certain things, about Abbey Road, you know, what different parcels in town to look at. Some of the Abbey Road. Age restriction. And it could not be, um, it wouldn't even be in Leland because it can't be on town.
The, 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 for those cycles, closer to the community to public transportation because it is N B T A. And, uh, desire was to be within two miles. You could do that most side of town.
Right, but to be also sensitive to the most side of town, that if that's the only parcel you choose. If you're looking at Coolidge, there are comments on that, that's, that's. It is a tough verb to say, that's what we're choosing just to zone more. So I'm just trying to say, are there any other places in town that we look at as well?
But the Kendall parcel may be state requirement for density. Apply with.
Like by itself, you know?
It, it possibly does, the only thing I've got to find out is there's a section of weapons that they showed that they took out, so I have to make sure that.
There now.
It may not be seventy.
I mean, the, the important goal is to get to the 10% S H I. But, um.
It all helps to be there.
Right, but they're two separate things, I guess. But it all, it all falls under the umbrella of housing, but.
Yeah.
Um. But this is something that we just have to comply with.
Right, and we also need to know what happens if we don't comply, if it's, we will be sued by the attorney general, that's already given. Um, and grant money will be withheld.
Right, so, so, so getting to, getting to the point where we comply with that. I think it should be the primary goal, and then, um. You know, along with getting to the 10% S H I.
Yeah.
You know, kind of moving in the same direction.
Well, I know we'll be able to talk about this on the 11th, and then we'll look at another item that we can maybe. You know, like we had our punch list of things that we brought up, um, and see if we can, you know. Being a fully remote is an easier time sometimes to share screen and look through any bylaw language, so, um, language in general or on anything. So we'll plan for that for the 11th, be remote, in person, 25th. Any other projects to discuss, so, so it is, I think it's 10:22 PM.
That's right.
Second, so move time and all those in favor return, thank you, everyone.